You are aware that you are being video recorded. Could you please stand for the plate? Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and eternal.
We have two items to record at closed session this evening. In closed session, by a vote of five to zero, the board took action to approve a two-day unpaid suspension for classified employees number seven six zero 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 two four zero zero and number seven six zero 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 two two three one. And the other action, under the employee discipline decision release report, in closed session, the board took action to issue a notice of release to temporarily certificate employees identification number seven zero 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 two five six seven, seven six zero 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 two seven three zero, and seven six zero 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 two seven three one pursuant to Ed Code Section four four nine five four subdivision B effective at the end of the 2018-2019 school year and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. The vote was five to zero in favor. You have a motion to approve our agenda. Second.
A couple of minor changes to the minutes, which you have in front of you. The changes are in red specific to Governor Norman leaving the time assigned performance. That's another left off. Page twelve, Mr. Dixon responded to the question related to the table pop exercises.
So we have.
And then that's on the minutes.
Okay.
And then the other is on item sixteen, which is the, there was a name left off the list, item sixteen. And we added that name. That's Ian Collins at Top Valley.
So all those in favor of the motion, agenda as amended? Opposed, Terrence Five-O. Tonight, we have two recognitions. Our first recognition is we're going to be playing our student participants.
Thank you, President Vickers. I think we'll read here so we can allow this space for our students.
Okay. So I'd like to invite up Celeste Gillis and Jeff Sulu and Bridget Porter, if she's here. So just a few pieces of information that say hi, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having us.
So it's an organization we've been working with for so many years. We're grateful for them being here tonight. We're fortunate that eight students get to participate in the great paintout. And also, all of our fourth grade students participate as well in sort of a four-pronged event where they get to explore art and experience it and observe it. So we're grateful for that. Do we have our students here this evening?
Come on through.
So this is quite a celebration of art and we're grateful for all of the people here today. We will make this happen.
Couple more words.
Oh, sure.
Hi, my, wait. Hi, my name is Charlie Miller. I'm a fourth grader at Top of the World Elementary School. I want to share a bit about my experiences visiting the Irvine Museum, participating in the paintout and going to the gallery night with my family. I had an incredible, I had, I had an incredible experience and a few challenges during the paintout. The outlines of the mountains were really hard for me. Mr. Jeff Sewell was a big help. He guided me as I was painting and helped me get through the process of creating an impressionist painting. Now to the museum. I loved just seeing the different types of ways to paint and the different types of paintings. It was, it was super cool. My favorite was the, the Big One of Dust by Mr. Sewell. It was a gift from him to the museum. It had these bright turquoise streaks in the sky and red dots of paint. Lastly, to the art gallery night at seven degrees. Seeing my future painting up on the wall with the other, with the other paintings made me feel like a true artist. I learned to enjoy the other people's paintings, too. It was really, it wa, it really was a true experience. Most of all, I learned that it is okay to make mistakes because in art, you can always change it. Thank you very much, Celeste.
Hi, my name is Sophie Moss. I'm from Top of the World also. I thought going to the Irvine Museum was very helpful for preparing me for what we were going to do, a painting, and it helped me know what the painting style was. The paintings were mostly of beaches, but some of them were of land. My favorite one was the cat on the beach because my favorite animal is a cat. Thank you.
Manuel, I would like to introduce Manuel. Manuel's a fourth grader at El Moro, and I didn't tell him to prepare an essay, so don't worry about that. But I did tell him to bring his painting and show that off to everybody if you want to hold it up. Manuel comes to us from Chile, and he really loved learning about art and he loved all aspects of El Moro. And then this is Alani Siaka. She's a fifth grader right from right here in Laguna Beach. And she participated in the field trip, and she wanted to tell you a little story about her painting.
Um, so when I went to the field trip, I was the fifth grader in my class that got to go. And I chose to paint a palm tree, but I wanted to make it look like it was in the sunset. And I. So this lady, when we went to the auction, she actually wanted to buy the painting when we went there. So it, because parents normally like.
So she's actually like a professional artist. If anything, that's the hour.
Hi, my name is Maya Rice. I'm also a fourth grader at T O W. I'm here to tell you that the plein air painting experience was a memorable one for my, was memorable one for my class. First, we took a field trip to the Irvine Art Museum where we learned about plein air paintings and artists. A few weeks later, we had a field trip at Alto Laguna Park to paint, to paint the scenery there. Unfortunately, we had to actually paint in the classroom because the weather was super windy. But the Laguna Beach Plain Air Society workers still made the experience really educational and fun. They brought beautiful photos that we could choose from and taught us the technique of plein air painting. Then last week, we had art night at seven degrees where we were all excited to see our own and each other's paintings. We felt like real artists with our works hanging on the walls individually by art lights and our names next to them. It was great to see our friends there. And also, there was a buffet which proved to be very popular. I really hope that kids get to experience this for years to come.
Thank you so much. Any further comments? I would just like to say, Bridget, Bridget, I'd like to say thank you for expanding the programs. I know in your work as a TOSA that it's really that reaching out to all the fourth graders is such an addition. But the gallery night is terrific. The students are so excited and their parents come and it's to see their paintings up on the wall. It's a real addition. And also, thanks to Al Tosa for continuing to work and to help us to expand our programs. It isn't a, as Dr. Depp said, it's a long time relationship, but it's, it's really an addition to our program. Thank you. And next, we have recognition of our LBHS girls water polo team, our championship team, C I F Division One. Ethan.
Well, first of all, I want to tell you guys it's great to be here. We really appreciate you having us. It's always fun if we get to do this one because it means that we won. Great to be here. But two, we truly feel, you know, like we are representing our community. And when we're competing, when we're training, our teams in the future, our teams in the past, and our school, and we feel really proud about what we did this year. And we really appreciate our support and we appreciate your support from, from you guys and from the community. It means, it means a lot to us. I thought we would just maybe get a chance to meet the, meet the team here. We're missing a couple of girls tonight. But we'll start with, with C C. I asked them just to tell you their name and their grade and maybe a couple of things about themselves.
My name is C C Stewart. I'm a senior and I will be playing water polo at Princeton University next year.
I'm Claire Gillian. I'm a senior and I'm going to play water polo at UCSB next year.
Hi, I'm Kennedy Corle and I'm a sophomore. And hi, I'm a defender.
I'm Ava. I'm a freshman and I'm an attacker.
I'm Lila. I'm a freshman and I'm also an attacker.
I'm Emma. I'm a sophomore and I'm an attacker.
I'm Quinn. I'm a senior and I'll be playing water polo at UCSB.
My name is Stevie Lopton. I'm a senior and I'm going to play water polo at UCSB.
My name is Grace Lohan. I'm a junior and I'm also a defender.
Hi, I'm Morgan Van Elka and I'm a junior and I'm an attacker.
Hi, I'm Molly Runner. I'm a sophomore and I'm an attacker.
Hi, I'm Teo Plak. I'm a junior and I'm going to go to USC.
I'm Jessie. I'm a sophomore and I'm an attacker.
I'm Emma. I'm an attacker and I'm a sophomore and I'm an attacker.
Hi, I'm Rachel Carver. I'm a sophomore and I'm an attacker.
Hi, my name is Cole Strauss. And I'm an attacker and sometimes defender.
I didn't know they were going to tell you your definition. We have a lot of attackers, I guess. I would call them all that, but that's okay. But I talked about where we feel really excited to be here. I feel really lucky to be speaking on behalf of these girls. We have such an incredible group of young women. They work so hard year in, sorry, year round. They play club. We're going to club right after this to go train. When they're not in season, they swim. They play in the summer. They're so dedicated. As you can see, they have aspirations of playing in college at great universities. And we're excited to help get them there and help send them there. They, they really send themselves there and we're, we're just a little small part of it. But, you know, we're excited to be a part of that. This year's team was, was amazing. We, we, we lost one game. We were twenty-nine and one to finish the, the C I F Sunset Section season. We had eleven games that were decided with a goal or, or two goals or less, including the championship game. This team was incredibly resilient. We moved into the Sunset League, as, as a lot of people probably know, with C D M and Newport Harbor. And we're able to win that league for the first time being in the league, which was, was a great accomplishment in itself. And, and to finish C I F and to win it overtime, say I had a, had a really big shot in overtime for us to, to, to have to count a magical, magical season. I think it's a testament to, to this group. You know, our, our, kind of our credo this year was, was harder, smarter, more together. You know, this group works harder, I think, than anybody in the country. I don't, I'd like to think they're pretty smart. We come in, I don't, I, I, I think the most important thing, though, is that they're the most together team. They really, really love each other and it's a family and it's a, it's a great culture that we have. So we're really honored to be here and I'm honored to be speaking on behalf of them.
Thank you. I, I follow the sports and I happen to like sports a lot. So I read a lot about you. And you do represent our school and our district really well, and I'm very proud of that. But I also learned as, as over the past number of years, as the team has gotten so strong here, it is a really tough sport. I mean, I, I had to start going and learning what the sport was about and I had no idea how difficult it is and what kind of endurance and pain it takes. So I commend you all for your commitment. And I do well also. When our graduates leave here, I like to watch the Pac-12 channel when we get those games on. And it's so exciting to see someone from here that's playing at the Coliseum Bowl. And the Olympic level. So it's, you have, you have a good reputation to follow. But it's a highlight.
Bridget, I'm really proud. I've known many of you girls. This is like a multi-age team. It's amazing. There are freshmen every year. So really proud. I love seeing your photos in the papers. Brings me such joy and I know how much hard work it is and I celebrate the seniors going off into their exciting careers.
Thank you. Thank you, Ethan.
And I want to say it was one of the most exciting games I've seen and probably just actually attending and, and watching you guys pull that one out. And I know at one point it looked, you know, you were down a little bit and kind of nodded a comeback. And it was fun to watch and even more fun to watch Ethan jump on the pool and celebrate again, and it was cold that night. But well, well fought and you guys played an amazing match. And thank you for representing our school and the street the way you do. Very proud to have, have had the opportunity to watch you. That was amazing. So kudos Ethan as well and, and coach and all he does to support you as well and outside of the pool. So thanks for coming tonight. And I think there's cookies, but I know you have practice, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't have a hallway, just say voice problem. Okay, our next item on our agenda is public comment. And I would just like to remind, these are public comment on non-agenda items. And the public, we speak about items that are on the agenda during the consideration of that item. Speaking time is limited to three minutes per speaker. And please pay attention to the device up here that will let you know when your time is up. And also, you need to fill out a blue card and then submit it so that we have a record. Who speaks to put it in the minutes? Thank you. Any, is there any public comment on non-agenda items? I have a card from Howard Gil.
My name is Howard Gilson. You know, first time I attended a meeting in this room was nineteen sixty-eight. And being here tonight, listening to the young people from the art program and from the sports team reminded me when my grandkids were at Top of the World, the great experiences I've had going on field trips with them. And then when I listened to the discussion about the game, I remember when my youngest daughter was on the varsity soccer team and we beat Stancia and we tied Costa Mesa that year. Those were very dramatic things. Brought back a lot of good memories. I wanted to speak tonight on the subject of the election of the board president. You know, I, I've been talking to people in town about the subject. And what I've heard is that members of the board who are in the majority and were in the majority on December eleventh when the president was elected, they, they say that the members of the board are saying, well, the reason they changed the rule from rotation and didn't follow the rotation protocol in bylaw nine one zero zero was because Board Member Perry doesn't follow protocol. Well, you know, it's interesting because if, let's say that nine one nine zero zero is ambiguous. Let's say that it's not a binding rule. I think it is a binding rule. I don't think it is ambiguous. But let's just say theoretically that nine one zero zero is, is not binding. Well, the protocols that Board Member Perry is accused of not following are also non-binding. So what do we have going on here? We have a situation where she's being, it's alleged that she doesn't follow non-binding protocols. But even if you treat nine one zero zero as non-binding and as a protocol, you didn't follow it on December eleven. So if not following a protocol and/or not filing, following an actual binding rule disqualifies somebody from being president, then nobody on the board is qualified because you've all violated protocols and/or board rules at different times. And so, you know, the real issue is why is it that somebody, you know, the young man in the fourth grade said something very interesting. He said, when you make a mistake, you can change it. And I would say the same thing to you. You make a mistake on December eleventh and you have the opportunity to change it. I've been spending a lot of time in North Carolina lately because my son-in-law and daughter moved into a new house. We're helping them move in. And in the ninth congressional district there in Charlotte, North Carolina, they just had a situation where an election was contested. And the candidate who had the highest number of votes in the election sat through some hearings on alleged irregularities, voting irregularities. And he listened to the testimony and he was winning. He was ahead. He was the guy that was in the lead. And after listening to testimony, he got up and said, after what I've heard, I don't want to take this seat based on that election and I'm asking the commission to call a new election. And he stepped back and called for a new election and that's what I would like to do tonight is call for the board to have a new election for president. Thank you.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
One more.
Did you have a blue card or? Okay, then go to the podium and please identify yourself.
Sure.
My name is Abel Manda. I'm the president of Laguna Beach Republicans. I'd like to address Laguna Beach Unified Schools to support on the subject of diversity and small group effectiveness. Many years ago, I attended Pace University in New York working on MBA in organizational behavior and development. One of the courses I took was on small group dynamics and effectiveness. We studied an experiment that was done at the university involving team effectiveness. The team was selected by the project lead that included, as I recall, approximately eight to ten members. The team was given a problem to solve and a measured amount of time with specific deliverables, deliverables of which the team would be measured. One of the members of the team was a contrarian. And as a contrarian are known to do, he was annoying, questioned, impeding progress as far as the rest of the group was concerned. At the end of the prescribed time, the group was rated whether they came up with deliverables that the professor and the staff had said is success. The group did pretty well and accomplished, having accomplished and teased out almost all the key points. At the end of the session, the group was allowed by secret ballot to vote on expelling one member of the group. Who'd they choose? You guessed it, the contrarian was expelled. The group minus the contrarian then was given a similar problem and their accomplishments were again measured. Turns out, without the contrarian, they didn't do so well. The lead investigator who led the group knew of the results of both tests. He let the group know. He then asked them to vote once again who they would expel a second time, despite evidence that the contrarian improved the results of the group and once again voted to expel him. I think the point of the experiment, what I've never forgotten for over thirty-five years, was that diversity of thought produces better results than groupthink. The board for years has valued unanimous decisions, which actually is a form of groupthink. For the last four-plus years, this board has had a contrarian who sometimes votes against the prevailing views. In effect, you want to expel her from the group, but because she's an elected official, you can't. Just order her off the island, you think. So you just, you just can't order her off the island. So you do the next best thing, which is to marginalize her and ignore your own rules. I'd like to conclude with a test question for you. No need to raise your hand or voice an opinion. One from each of you to consider in your own mind and heart, see if you like the answer you give yourself. How many of you decided that because you knew me and knew I was president of the Laguna Beach Republicans, you didn't need to listen to me? Nor evaluate what I might say? If you did, if you thought that and you were part of the group that did not believe in diversity of thought, the next step might be to demonize those who make you uncomfortable by thinking differently. It's, it's my hope that no one on this board closes their minds to what I've said, where the contrarian makes this group better and our school is better.
So any other public comment on non-agenda items? Next slide along our agenda are reports and we begin with our student representative, Hyphra Morder.
There are quite a few events coming up for the students of L B U S. The students at El Moro just finished celebrating Respectability Month where students recognize that everyone has different abilities, strengths and weaknesses. It is important to respect individuals no matter what. Teachers at El Moro are familiarizing their students with the annual pass test through practice tests. Thurston counselors will be visiting El Moro with fifth graders on March eighteenth and Top of the World fifth graders on March nineteenth. Fifth grade parent orientation at Thurston will be held on March twentieth. Both elementary schools will be participating in the annual jog-up on Friday, March twenty-second. At Thurston, students are working on their passion projects where students have the choice to attend one of six field trips, Angel Stadium, Vans, Virgin Orbit, Finance Park, O C Rescue Mission and Sony. Elected cards were handed out to sixth and seventh graders last week to choose elective classes for next school year. Tomorrow, the high school counselors, along with a few A S B students, are visiting Thurston to present all of the activities and classes available for next year's incoming freshmen. Eighth grade parent night at the high school is March twenty-first. Many clubs on campus will be setting up booths for the eighth graders and their parents to check out. At the high school, seniors finished scholarship essays to the Laguna Beach High School Scholarship Foundation last week with the help of the College and Career Center. Their scholarship interviews will be sometime later this month. The Spring Musical, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, will be opening this weekend. Our drama department has been working to bring to life this biblical story full of fun dancing and different music dramas. The Wind Ensemble will be traveling to New York later this month to perform at Carnegie Hall. On behalf of Mr. Neal, great, great athletics are up in, in full swing for the spring season. The spring is our busiest season as we have multiple teams in sports, such as track and swimming, that both have rosters of over one hundred student athletes. Our boys and girls lacrosse teams are entering their second season after their successful inaugural year. Baseball, softball, boys tennis, boys golf and volleyball are also practicing or competing daily. Preseason games are coming to a close and the Sunset Conference League play begins this week. Our athletic staff and student athletes have done a great job rising to the challenge of our new league and everyone's excited about the completion of the new F on the table. Thank you.
Any questions for Craig? Thank you. We have our bargaining representatives and we have Marcus Christian C.
Yes. Good afternoon. I'll be brief. We've had our second day of interspace bargaining. And again, I would impress the board that this is a very successful way to vocalize your interests and work on, with everyone's input, the goals that you want to accomplish or the options. And it's very dynamic and a lot of conversation happens, but everybody hasn't expressed, they're able to express their, their ideas and what they would like to inform the entire group of small bits that they may have that other people may not have regarding that particular article. And so, again, I mentioned it last time I was here, that I truly recommend that it would be a dynamic process for the school board to partake in. With that said, we're moving along. And again, I would like to comment with Ms. Winston and the administrative team that we really do have very collaborative, even on the issues that come up that maybe, well, where are we going with this? We can still end the meeting with feeling that we've accomplished a great deal. That's all I'd like to say this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
The booth up there, Sarah?
I have my blue card.
Board members, anything you would tend with as an assignment? J F N C?
Sorry?
J F N C, the chief of. J F N C.
School power and gallant.
School power and gap rate. They, investments are up a little bit again, so they feel better, good about that, although for the long term, they're in it for the long term, so it's gonna be fine either way. There were 30 applicants for school teacher grants, which is exciting, and there were, there's quite a variety, so they're looking forward to getting into those.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Oh wait, that's yours.
Community Coalition. One, the Boys and Girls Club is now working with their kids and parents with Piers. So thank you for bringing Piers to LVSD, so they've heard about it, and they are now bringing it into their program.
Right, they are, yes.
They are, so thank you, because I know that started off with you and that's Triple Core Community. And Piers is, you're probably better at explaining that than I am, but it's a...
A UCLA behavioral-based program to teach kids social skills. And they go through very succinct, evidence-based behavioral steps to learn how to perform different social skills that we all maybe take for granted and are intuitive to us, but some kids do need to be directly taught them. And this is a tremendously wonderful program, and I'm so happy to be trained in it, and I'm so happy that they are doing that at Boys and Girls Schools.
Yeah, so they just finished all their trainings, they're bringing them.
Yes, that's wonderful.
And then they also, they have this norming campaign, which pops up on our students' social media. So they see it, like, it's not so much we see it as parents, but when they're out on Instagram or whatever they might be on, it'll pop up. I don't know if you've seen it. But this is the one for South Orange County, which 72% of South Orange County teens put their necks on the right, right? So they'd rather play music than partake in drinking. And they're working on, they have a slightly better number, and they're working on a new norming campaign. And they got some pushback from the kids, not as much our kids, because they work for all, this is for all South Orange counties, but they got some pushback, that they didn't believe that number was that high. So they're going back, talking about how those norms work, but they're coming up with maybe a different way to say it, so the kids will believe it more in other schools. And then, they also had the same kind of kindness thing, you know, the kindness cards. But they have a program where they have kindness cards from St. Joe's, and they go around to different community functions, and they're handing out their kindness cards. And I'm gonna share these other things with Victoria, to share with you guys on those. The other one I did want to say is that they're also working with, I think this is, St. Joe's is directly not community coalition, they're part of it. They're working with our students at lunchtime. And they've been working with them on, I think the one that I was most impressed with there is, "I wish my friends knew more about..." And then most of the kids at high school at lunchtime, they wish they knew their friends knew more about vaping. And three things I would like to change in my community. And so, it was drugs and alcohol, homeless population, and vaping. So it's interesting that this, these come up, and this is gonna help guide that group in discussions and projects, so they're on campus. And then? Who wants it? This is brightening.
I attend a PTA council, and they are all working hard with their four different school sites, PTAs, and getting ready their alma mater for their job-a-thons. They've been getting some significant discussion about extending funds and not having too large a carryover for the next year and implications of that. So they have some work cut out for themselves, and it was a good way. They always have this representation, which helps to spread the news and spread communication, which I always appreciate that our vendors come and speak.
Dr. Ward?
No, for me.
Not for me, but. Principal report is Chris Duddy from Elmore School. You're not here, are you?
No.
Well, good evening, board members, in this fashion, with community members. Pleased that I have the opportunity to share the Elmore Elementary School story with you this evening. So first of all, we've had a goal in this school district for several years, that relationships matter. And by focusing on relationships, what we've learned, that students and teacher relationships have made teachers really explore what will truly engage our students by knowing how they learn best. And this is through hands-on, real-world experiences. If you can see the picture there, how engaged the students are in their learning there, whether it's in the garden or the science lab. The students really like to get dirty, if you will. That real-world problem-solving led to a 21st century writing assignment in fourth grade, where students had to give their opinion on whether fourth graders should have homework or not. And they had to read four sources on homework, one of which the board used way back when they set policy on homework years ago. And it listed 10 minutes per grade level as the appropriate amount of homework. So it was interesting that the students came up with opinions. They supported their opinions. They cited the sources. And it came out about 50/50 whether or not students should have homework. Several people said, "Of course not. No, no homework." But there were several people like, that even said, if you read through the essays, as myself and the teachers did, that it would prepare them for college, so that they thought that was a good idea. The next area where we've been working is building capability, right? Of everyone, our staff. And that's through professional development. And you see a picture there of myself and the staff going through the StrengthsFinder training at the beginning of the year this year to learn about each other's strengths and how to work better together, and who's good at what. So we really use the strengths-based approach. The other focuses we've had this year is really re-energizing our professional learning communities and having the teachers work together, identify essential learning outcomes in math, and take those through the data cycle to see how the students are achieving on those specific targets for their instruction in math. And to help support that, the principals have been teaching the staff about the effective mathematics instruction by using the eight mathematical standards. You can see a copy of those right here. This will come back later on in the presentation. You'll see how this incorporated into one of our school-wide goals. Another thing this has led to by having real-world experiences and teachers working together with each other is tons of learning opportunities, K through 12, for everyone to learn from each other. So what you see here is a picture of Bridget, who was here earlier, and she left, but she's our teacher at the high school. She brought the high school students down to Elmore. These are the third graders, learning from the high school students who are in the drama program, how to give an effective play. What makes, what are the elements of drama? What's the audience looking for? So the third graders learned from the high school students, and then they put on a Charlie and the Chocolate Factory play. So I thought that was a great use of collaboration. Another way we like to collaborate is through community partnerships. And I'm really proud of the partnerships that Elmore has built with the Laguna Beach Police Department, the Laguna Beach Fire Department, our PTA. The AAW comes, and they have tutors who tutor our kids twice a week after school. Crystal Cove State Park. And we just have Read Across America, where community members came to our school and helped read, or and did read to every class in our school. I'd also like to note that I just finished up with Ranger Winter, and we are going to have a beach cleanup at Crystal Cove on Earth Day. So Saturday, April 20th, we're having a beach cleanup at Crystal Cove. If you'd like to come help out. All right, well, we have to look at data as well, right? We have to see how we're doing. So at Elmore, we love to look at data, and here's the English Language Arts number, and all I can say is, wow. We were very pleased with our students' performance on the English Language Arts assessment last year. You can see that 86% of our students were meeting or exceeding the standards. And we attribute this to, as you know, we adopted our new English Language Arts curriculum last year, wonders, and the teachers, using best-first instruction and using fidelity to that program, we were able to achieve our highest English Language Arts numbers to date, yet. We also looked at the Bright Bike survey. And again, we see how staff and students have grown over the past five years. In all the areas, we see that Elmore students and staff are either proficient, advanced, or exemplary. And we're growing in each area every year, whether it's the overall score, the classroom access. All our students have access to technology, the skills, and the environment in classroom. So now we look at our math numbers, and we see that 78% of our students are either meeting or exceeding the standards. And in comparison to school districts around us in the state of California, this is outstanding performance. But we, as a staff, looked at that and said, hmm, why aren't those numbers equal to that of our Language Arts scores? So we took a step further. You'll see that in just a moment. The other thing we looked at is our LCAP survey results. So we're looking for strengths and areas for improvement. And that top one, "My teachers expect me to do my best." 100% of the respondents said strongly agree or agreed that we have high expectations for all students. I thought that was, I was very impressed with that. I don't think I've ever had 100% on the survey. And, "Do teachers help me when I don't understand something?" 98% agreed or strongly agreed. I think that shows that the teachers and the staff are doing an excellent job with our students. On the other hand, we looked at using curriculum for social-emotional learning, and we went, damn. Only 42% agree or strongly agree that we're effectively using our social-emotional learning curriculum. So we put a goal into our single plan for student achievement to address that area. And then we do see, on the other hand, that the growth mindset language and strategies continues to grow. And we see that 89% agree or strongly agree with using the growth mindset language. Okay, so what does all that mean? So we put all that data together, and we developed some goals, so we can continually improve. And so our number-one goal in the CIPSA, or Single Plan for Student Achievement, is to increase academic performance in the area of communicating reasoning and conceptual understanding in math. We looked at that data. We dug down into it. We analyzed it. And we understand that this is not by much, but this is the lowest area where our students were performing. So that's why we are looking into those eight mathematical practices. And the teachers are doing a good job. We've, with instructional services, we've developed some professional development for them, some great resources, some videos, some three-step problems, and it's really got the students thinking. And then, of course, looking at our social-emotional strength, we want to increase student strength in that area. And we want to do this through communication, collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking. So I think when you put all these elements together, what it equals is excellent student experiences. And, you know, just like you heard from the paint-out, all those people working together to have the paint-out started as a field trip, now the entire fourth grade gets to experience that. We had Jackie Nunez from the Akmen Native American Tribe come and talk to the kids about what it was like to live here way before these students ever experienced Orange County. And they had a great time doing it, as you can see from the picture. Again, I really think it's all about relationships. If the kids know that you care, then they're gonna try their best for you. And they really are excited about learning. So we've tried to make Elmore a place where students come and thrive. So that's not the end of the story. It's just one chapter in our goal, to promote relationships, improve, and focus on our students each and every day. So with that, are there any questions?
Thank you, Chris.
Were there any questions? So I was so fortunate to be able to read, and I was gonna say this to her. And the fourth graders had given me samples of their opinion pieces, which I was shocked by, the fact that they could write it, they don't have their names on those. But they were hoping they could come and present them, but they were not able, in appearance, to do such.
It's about homework debate?
Yeah. And so one of them said, one of them said, "Does a bus go over there?" Because it means it says, "Oh, I have to eat before..." Right, so they were really trying to work out how to do here, but it was so impressive that they spent... Well, first, I explained after I read the book that I was dyslexic, so they had all kinds of questions. And then they went to homework. That's what they wanted to talk about, not read the second book. And so they pulled out some of their essays, and their formative was better than one of those. They were amazing. I could not write like that in fourth grade. I'm sure definitely in middle school.
I just have their introductions there. I just picked two introductions that I thought were very strong in the presentation. It's not actually in yours, I don't think, but I can share that with you. And Carol has the entire essays there. They're five-paragraph essays. They cited their sources, and they supported their opinion. And they had a thesis, and they had to recite that thesis at the end. And they did an excellent job on it, and they were really into it.
They were really into it, and the ones who were like...
This is about their life.
No, they really weren't, no. The ones who were like, "We should," were like, "What do you think?"
Yeah.
Right, but the others were definitely never firm in their opinion. But one of them, I think, is one of the ones you have there, someone was asking. But it was neat that they shared them, and they really wanted to share them with all of us. I made copies, and the teacher said, fourth grade teacher said, "Whatever, we wanted them to provide whatever we wanted." I don't believe that, just that they wanted to come. So you have passionate teachers and students in that school, so.
And I think the key was, like you said, thank you, right? It's their life.
Right, their best.
It's about them, yeah.
Yeah.
And the wonderful thing is, we had to talk about, when they were talking about homework for fourth grade, that they weren't adjusting their homework for fourth grade. Took a little to sink it, but they'd be adjusting for the next kids coming along. And once that sank in, though, they became more passionate, not less so. So thank you for taking risks and continuous improvement and trying things that are just as hard for you as it is for the teachers who are trying technologies and other processes. So we're definitely modeling that.
Because we know when we ask them what they think, and they think.
Yeah.
So, you know, and everyone likes to be asked.
Yeah, that's great.
We have emphasized writing, so it's paying off. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Our next item is the consent calendar. Are there items?
I need to pull A2.
Are there any others that we're going to need to pull? Just let them? Yes. Any consent calendar? Is there a public comment on the consent calendar? See, now they have a motion for items A1 through J. Second. Any small questions or?
A1, A2, minus A2, right.
Minus A2. I was thinking that, I can say it. So all those in favor? We just had a motion. A2, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? There's five more. Now we have a motion, please, for A2. So moved. Second. And D. And Carol is exiting. So we have all those in favor of A2. Aye. And then C. Thank you. We have two informational items this evening. Our first informational item is Laguna Beach Elementary School Resource Officer and Student Spotlight of Florida.
Yeah, I'm gonna have Corporal Ashen come to the podium. He's going to present a student spotlight that he worked on, and very proud of the work that he's done. And it's fun to see you just wait.
All right, so good evening, school board, our staff members, parents, and students.
All right, so good evening, school board, our staff members, parents, and those of you online. Taking on the School Resource Officer position uh came with so many exciting ventures for me personally. First thing I wanted to focus on was uh uh safety, education, and positive intervention with our students. But I have to truly admit, my first day of school, I was so nervous. I mean, I think I remember the nervousness you felt when you were a kid, the first day of school, the butterflies, just that anticipation of, you know, are people gonna like me? Are they gonna, you know, how would I be accepted on campus? I was worried how my haircut looked, you know, just so many different things. But I have to say that when I stepped into the campus environment, the students just embraced me with so much welcoming and the staff, members, and parents. Just made me feel so welcome. I thank you that. And one story that really stands out in particular with me uh personally is a student that's here with me, Sarah. If you can come up here and stand at the podium with me, I appreciate it. So my first thing. And so the story we had, this is the story. So the first day of school uh during lunch, I was so nervous to walk through the quad because I was wanting to make in, like, you know, am I gonna make friends, you know? And so I knew that in my position, uh, the first thing that came before any of my goals um was to form relationships with, with our community. And so as I'm walking through the quad at the high school during lunchtime, I'm looking around, you know, and just trying to find someone to come talk to me, right? Come talk to you. I see Sarah, Sarah in a way at the end of the quad, she's just smiling and just so positive, this vibrant energy that she brought. Just um, I just kinda, I just ended up walking up to her and just started talking to her, to introduce myself. She asked me what my role was on campus. Um, and I just noticed this positive, just smile that just stood out. And as the days went on and I talked to Sarah, I noticed that students would begin to gravitate towards her positivity and just this welcoming environment. She just really just, just pushed out to everyone. And I just truly admired that. But not too long after meeting Sarah, she told me about a health condition that she has um that she struggles with every single day. And she, when she told me that, I was taken by it because it made me wonder how could someone so positive and so full of smiles every single day um have, have to struggle in the way that she does? And how she pulled through, how she get through every single day? And so I remember going home uh that evening and I, and my wife knew all about Sarah because I always talked about this. I saw Sarah today, you know, but I told her what Sarah had told me and and uh it just really weighed heavily on my heart. But I felt that I wanted to do something, not only to, to honor uh Sarah, but to also use her story to inspire other students who struggle in some form. And so I came up with this vision called the student spotlight. And the student spotlight is a way to uh honor students who promote positivity, diversity, and inclusion support, um who commit to community service off the campus, um and have school spirit, show school spirit. I came up with these ideas in the, in this vision. And so I scheduled a meeting with uh Dr. Belloria, uh Dr. Allman, um Ms. Winston here, and then uh Sarah, Sarah and Carol, who's with us today uh this evening. And so I told them about my idea and they saw the, the, the need for it. They saw how the value students can get, really get a lot out of it. And so two weeks ago, I'm proud to say that uh the collaborative effort with Sarah's uh teachers um and ASB, who did the videotaping, we were able to video our first students by light, which was Sarah. And so I would like to show that video to you. Um, and received so much positive feedback from not only the community, but from the school, the students. And I'm just proud of Sarah. I'm proud of her. She's a leader in her own right and her story and this uh, what she has done for me personally and for others, it speaks volumes. So without further ado, please enjoy uh the student spotlight. My name is Jim Sashin. I'm a School Resource Officer for Logan Beach High School. And today's student in the spotlight is going to be Sarah S. I remember walking through the quad and seeing this big grin smiling, dreaming to her because I know anyone. She made me feel like I belonged on campus.
At the beginning of the semester of school year, I had an email from Vermont about some health conditions she had. When she came to my class, she came over with a smile and she has continued with that smile and that enthusiasm and that work ethic. When she has every reason to stay at home and to frown and to be sad, she overcomes it.
Although she has a very rare complicated nerve disease, she takes everything with uh pride and grace and keeps on going.
Our mantra is to choose joy, choose joy, and in every situation, no matter how hard it is, because there's always joy to find in that.
She loves singing or making small talk about hobbies. She liked playing the piano and she also loves the group called Chicago. She is truly an inspiration uh to this campus.
I'm very proud of Sarah and I know that she will touch the lives of many, many people. Thank you. Was that on the school website, the high school website?
Yeah, so we, so we uh, put this on our school um websites, all our social media outlets, and also our police department um social media outlets. And the, the feedback is just every day someone's talking about the spotlight and it's actually really hard to, you know, just warming discussions with people in the community that how it really resonated within their story and it helped them to get through some things that they were going through in their life. And just sort of reminder to smile your way through life because a smile can change so many things.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up with like doing this idea and spotlighting the student. I mean, it's-
I told things to, to Sarah. She inspired that vision and, and I could, I would never have had that, 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 that vision without her um, her, her inspiring, the inspiration. So we have it once more, so.
Thank you, Sarah, for being a light on the campus of this.
Thank you.
Is there a public comment on this presentation? Thank you. Again, thank you. Thank you for coming, most of you.
Sorry, she was squirmy. She has like an eight out of ten pain.
That's fine. That's okay.
A little squirmy.
Thank you. Our next information item is a twenty nineteen summer school program update, Dr. Lee Brooks, thank you.
So I bring this to you at, we'd like to work with students as a broader part of our support for students. Uh, it's our plan for summer school for first through eighth grade. It's our kinders through seventh. Um, but as they promote, we call them first through eighth graders, so those students for four weeks. And our high school students for five weeks, including extended. So in the board items, um it lists the intervention classes and the enrichment classes. You've already approved the dual enrollment classes, so you're aware of that. We'd like to hold an ELD academy that would include um a few different student universities, but also support in key content areas that uh produce some additional, students could use some additional support in. And then intervention for our first through third, foundational skills to build decoding and coding skills. Uh, four or five would build on that literacy, uh, uh, pieces of text complexity, but also spend some time in conceptual mathematics. Uh, six through eight conceptual mathematics, literacy, and building a successful mindset. So study skills, how to continue to build um self-efficacy and um confidence in students. Included in that program is ELD. Um, and then uh to, we want to think differently about the breaker, the formally breaker one-on-one course. We'd like to do a successful mindset piece for that. So it's the students that are leaning Thurston, uh, but will be going to the high schools, entering the eighth graders. And then we'll continue with credit recovery as we have in years past as well. And um Irene is, we've been very far since we've, so I believe I've covered all those topics in a week. Any questions?
Is there a public comment on this information item on our summer school plans for this summer? Or comments, questions?
You go, Sarah. So literacy and math, if child's doing busos or can they just be doing part of that, what they need?
They could attend for exactly what they need. That's our intent. We want to be very prescriptive. So uh in, included, included in this is some professional development for teachers, but also we want to rely on to the yellows that our teachers are creating right now. So that's those, that's that final bullet there for up to six hours for assessment, uh assessments. To, to then accomplish that they're there for the very special service, yes.
My question is on breaker, successful mindsets. Is that being promoted to eighth graders? Is that the goal? And so do we explain what?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is it open to all that coming ninth graders or is it targeted?
Targeted for students, uh, yes, meaning particularly of the particular skills, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Uh, we move to our action items for this evening. Our first item, item fifteen, approval of positive certification of the second interim report.
Thank you, President Vickers. Uh, there are very minor changes from first interim to second interim, but I have a short presentation just gonna highlight these changes to the board and community. Um, these are, we are still um able to meet all of our financial obligations in current and next two subsequent years and the foreseeable years, which is why staff is recommending a positive certification. Uh, as far as our revenue changes, they're very slight. And when I say slight, the LCFF sources that decrease is about six hundred dollars from first interim, so it's very small. Uh, federal revenue came in a little bit higher than we had in first interim and our other state local revenue has increased by about eighty-three thousand dollars. As far as our expenditure changes. Uh, salaries and benefits, there's an increase and it's a significant increase, but this was taking the potential one-time money that we had set aside for the early retirement incentive and putting it into the budget, so into the benefits section. That's why you see that increase there. Books and supplies has a slight decrease because the book expenditures become in less than we have known or thought about in first interim. And our services have increased based on our contract services. And capital raise, we're essentially delaying a few of our projects until the next few years. That's why there's a decrease in that category. As far as the governor's budget proposal and its impact, we're gonna know a lot more after the May revision. Because the governor had such a short amount of time between being operated and then finally finalizing that proposal, there's not a lot of details in there. So he does propose to fully fund the LCFF uh with the only. No proposed discretionary one-time funding, which is a change in what we experienced under governor's leadership. Um, the, there is a proposal to take three billion dollars of non-proposition ninety-eight money and buy down the California State Teachers Retirement System pension liability debt. Um, however, that's in the proposal. The legislative analyst office has come out with some different ideas on that, so we're gonna have to wait to get more details on that as well. And there's a significant focus on the early childhood education. And most of that is one-time money and it is outside the proposition idea. So as far as that, his proposal on the effect, regards our specific budget, uh, has no effect on our current year revenues. Um, the CalSTRS pay down was quite roughly two hundred and forty thousand less than we saw in first interim and it is reflected in the second interim report. Um, there are still our significant uh district contributions on behalf of employees to STURS in uh State Teachers Retirement System and Applejack players retirement system. This current year, we're paying about sixteen point three percent on behalf of employees. If the proposal goes forward, it would be seventeen point one percent next year. If it didn't go forward, it'd be eighteen point one percent. So either way, it's going to increase. It's just how fast that increase. Those will depend on the proposal and how this through. And our declining enrollment, a steady decline, it's not much, but it does affect any sort of grants tied to our per pupil average daily. So we gotta take that into consideration for the year. As far as our fiscal highlights, um, our revenues and expenditures are tracking as expected. That's why there are very minor changes between our first interim and second interim. Um, as always, we're continuously trying to improve our policies and procedures. So we have a new updated protocol for cash handling, proceeding, and transfer of money to our school sites. And thank you to our school board for your support in providing another annual contribution in two thousand seventeen, which has our budget. Expenditures grow, we do mind full of community funding differential, make sure that we're expanding our reserves as well. So what's next? Tonight, we are here to recommend a positive certification of our second interim report. Um, we're gonna get a lot more details about the governor's budget proposal and the new modification at the May revision. Um, that's gonna help us start finalizing our budget for June, where we'll present information item in early June, come back with any uh minor tweaks or final tweaks by the end of June for approval, and then kick off another great fiscal year beginning in July. I can't believe we're talking about July, I'm gonna be off. So with that, I would recommend that we still go uh provide a positive certification in the second interim, without having to get any questions. So move.
A second? Public comment on this action item? All right.
I'm used to doing the other way around.
I don't know. Is there a public comment on this item?
Uh, my name is Howard Gilsing. This item is the first item on the agenda uh tonight, falls squarely in the category of governance. As I said to the board before, if you look at the model of public education in the Education Code and the Government Code, the basic message from the legislature is that education is too important for the uh school board and um governance is too important for the educators. And um, you know, uh, this item of the financial report is a governance issue. And it's one in which it's really important that the public have confidence and trust in the governance capabilities and capacities of the school board. And uh, it raises an issue uh that goes again back to the issue of compliance with your own bylaws and and um the credibility that you have in the eyes of the community on something like compliance with your procedure and bylaw nine one zero zero for election of the president. And again, going back to the subject of whether or not you followed, you know, as I say, what we've had here, if you uh think about what's going on here, the board has been trying to enforce non-binding protocols uh against one member. But then the board has not been following bylaws that are binding under, under state law. Let me give you an example. Um, about a year ago, maybe it was more, more time has passed than, than, since then, the board was ordered by a court to remove some notations that were made in the transcript of the student because of disciplinary item. And the board made the decision that it was not gonna comply with the order, that it was gonna appeal, and while it was appealing, it was not gonna comply with the order. And yet, if you look at your bylaw nine three one zero, it states in there, and you know, the beautiful thing about nine three one zero is that it says that you can't do anything that's inconsistent with federal or state law. Doesn't matter if it's a rule, protocol, whatever it is, you can't do it. And if you put something in the superintendent's contract that's inconsistent with state law, it's null and void. So one of the things that nine three one zero says is that you cannot take any action as a board that's inconsistent with an order of a court. So when that court ordered you to remove that notation from that student's transcript and you decided to defy that court order and instead appeal it and not comply while it was under appeal, you violated your bylaw nine three one zero. Under nine three one zero, it says you can't do anything that's inconsistent with a federal or state law or a court order. And so you're holding uh member Perry to this strict liability standard. You don't follow one of our protocols and you can't be president. And yet you, as a board, all of you violated nine three one zero uh by, and the school district violated, by not complying with that court's order. So by that standard, none of you are qualified to be president. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on the item of which is second interim report? See none, and uh, ask for a motion please?
I'm moving.
Okay.
Kelly and Peggy, and is there any more discussion undecided?
I thought you did an exceptional, good job, Jeff, on all the reporting. It all makes sense to me. And I'm really grateful that uh you're in charge of this area.
I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Raymond Lee and Twee Boo in my office. You did a fantastic job with this report as well. I wouldn't be happy to do that.
Please pass on our appreciation for the thoroughness of this report.
Absolutely.
And it's uh, I'm glad they're doing it.
Absolutely.
Because it's uh, there's a lot of information in here and what I find, when I check back and forth looking for things, everything matches. And so that's greatly appreciated. Parker, did you have any questions or discussion on this item?
And then Jeff, I have one quick question. On negotiations, where-
And then Jeff, I have one quick question. On negotiations, where do we, under timeline, and this is maybe Alicia's question, where do we end up where we're hoping, right, where we would end negotiations on this? Are they not connected, like the method? It's not connected.
It's, it's not required.
Any other? I just had one question, Jeff, on page, uh, P100. Is that the additional $85,000 to the secretary's fund, is that added by the second interim?
Yes, it'll be on the 105,000.
The 105,000 in first interim?
Yes.
Thank you. Piper?
Yes.
Allison Faber?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Next item, item 16, approval of California School Board Association, CSBA, 2019 delegate assembly election. Victoria and Peggy.
I'm Nora.
Nora, represent him.
I am your CSBA representative, and I've, you've received all the applications for the delegates. I have ticked up a list of my recommendations. It's one for each of you. And together with it is a description of what a delegate is, in case you want to know. And then I, uh, made sure to represent that we got to choose nine candidates from the list, so really, I think we only have 14 people on the list. They include, uh, North County and South County representatives. They include an elementary district, a high school district, along with several unified districts, and they vary with experience, several being first-time candidates and, uh, the majority being those that have experience. Do you have any questions?
There was another person on the list that I thought, well, before, we'll get to this, go back to the motion, but that, is there public comment on this item?
Yes, my name is Howard Hills, and I just wanted to say that, um, you know, I was happy to see a couple meetings ago that, um, the superintendent was proposing that he take a position on some legislation in Sacramento, and, um, I saw the board go through the process of deliberating and giving the superintendent that authorization. And I thought that was an excellent example of competent and effective governance by the board. By the way, I got so zupperant, Mr. Dixon, I forgot to say I thought your financial report was really good and I thought you did a good job representing it. But, um, going back to this issue here of, with this California School Board Association. Again, um, and word member Wilson, you're the representative of the California School Board Association. I would advise you to also look at 9310 because it says in there, nobody can take a position on behalf of the district unless it's approved by the board. You know, at these California School Board Association meetings where the delegates all get together, I really seriously doubt that very many of the delegates have specific express authorization for some of the things that they support. If I were a delegate to the California School Board Association from the school district, what I would do is propose that they amend their bylaws to make it clear that nobody can come to the California School Board Association and vote for something unless they've been authorized by their school board. But, um, anyway, so again, the subject is familiarity with and compliance with, uh, your bylaws. Now, at the last meeting we had, the board president made a statement that being president is a very important. And she announced that she had transferred her ability under rule 9322 to participate in deciding what's gonna be on the agenda, that she just advocated that position that she has under the board bylaw and turned it over to the superintendent. Now, that's very interesting because that means that there's nobody that's elected that participates in what goes on the agenda. Uh, and it's gonna be interesting to sort that out tonight because under your rules, basically, right now, a member of the general public has more right to put something on the agenda than an elected member of the board because of the restrictions that you've imposed on, uh, members. But, um, the thing about it is that the president of the board does not have the authority to advocate her responsibilities under the bylaw. 9322 says that the superintendent decides what's on the agenda, and he, she worked in doing that, he, the super, the he or she works with the superintendent in his capacity as the secretary. And so it's not like he is a co-equal in the process. The board president is the primary person with responsibility under bylaw 9322. So again, if violating a protocol or not complying with a protocol disqualifies Board Member Perry from being the president, the fact that the board, the existing board president announced that she's advocated her responsibility, that means that she can't be president either. So when you won't let anybody in your club unless they're perfect, then you gotta be perfect too. And the fact is, none of us are perfect, as that nice woman from the fourth grade pointed out to us.
Thank you. Thank you, Peggy, for the presentation, and I ask for, uh, a motion. Oh, any other public comment on this item? Which is the CBS delegate nomination decision.
Now, this is how you, the board has done it, where the?
Yes.
It's like, now, if you wanna change it in the future to where there's a vote on people, you can do that.
We'll do that.
This is how, was explained to me, so I, these are my recommended.
Because, just to clarify, you are not a delegate. This is just a law.
No, I am not a delegate. I am not nominating myself. I'm nominated from the applications in region 15.
Because then you doesn't have a delegate yet.
Yes.
We've never had one.
Yes.
So, okay. Then I'd ask for, um, a motion, please.
A second?
So the motion is second to accept, uh?
A motion to accept Peggy's first.
Not made.
Is that what they're doing? Uh, when there's a discussion.
Well, after the motion, a discussion follows the motion. And I know, ask Piper, if you, uh, have want to discuss, like a discussion. Or part of our discussion, if you choose. Okay, now Dee, this is a discussion time following the motion.
Oh, okay, I can hear. Um, so how many of these people did you meet?
I haven't met any of them. I read their applications, and then several had recommendations from the superintendent.
Okay.
So I read all the information they provided.
Okay, and?
Now, I may have met some of them and don't know that, I can't recall their name because I've been to the?
And that's the packet that we received.
Orange town.
So we all have read that information.
Right, right. As, as last time, there, I agree strongly with some of the people that you chose. There's somebody else that I thought was very strong. But for me, it's like reading an application versus, which gives you information, but then actually interviewing the person gives you more information. So when it's somebody that you've talked to extensively, I think that gives you, um, you're more qualified to make a decision about.
That's true, but the CSBA doesn't have an opportunity to go meet them all. There's not kind of a mixer to interview the candidates. Is, is there one of them I'm not aware of?
The dinners that they have, usually the candidates who they are running around.
Oh, okay, okay.
So one of the people that I think very highly of is, um, Carrie Flanders from Rayo Linda. She was not only board president, but she has gotten recognition statewide.
I, I have to be honest, all of them were strong candidates. If you, I mean, to me, there wasn't, there was maybe one that I thought their sense of, just the structure of their application was sort of incomplete. So I took them out. I was trying to give, for me, when I read, I felt like the candidates I chose were well-qualified and had a varying experience, so that was my choice.
Well, I?
If you can, I mean, next year, you could be CSBA rep and choose them because I feel like you have strong, stronger.
Well, I have some opinions about the ones that I had met and talked to and think ask excellent questions.
Right.
And I'm very concerned with legislation.
Okay, but, but most of them wrote something really interesting about the biggest challenges facing. I thought that was a really telling part of the application, so that's what I gave attention to. I, I'm gonna still stick with my nine. I'm not sure how we handle switching it.
You could have banned the motion, I believe.
Well, I'm not here to sit and remove and, yeah, I mean, that's not.
You can vote on, vote on the motion on the floor. Who else should introduce a new motion or? It's up to you.
Is there any other discussion coming in, other board members, or have they, it's recommended that you want to choose someone else?
Well, I have no problem with these because, as I said, we're all lost, uh, with not knowing how to vote, however you kind of qualify us on. I would have any problem if we take one off of these person in, uh, also, because she seems to know someone, and since voting on a group they don't have anyone.
Thank you.
Maybe I don't understand the delegate role because when Dee, you did this for four years, didn't you, for three years? And then you brought us more people and we then agreed to those.
But I went and met the people.
I can, you did it differently.
I went and tried to meet.
I can't, you did it differently, and I'm just saying that we didn't question whether we want, we wanted.
But you could have.
Well, we could have.
Yes, but you also asked not to do it again. You also asked not to do this again.
You didn't want to do this role anymore, and so.
Well, I thought we were supposed to share roles.
Okay, I was just saying that's, I, I just assume that you dedicate the time. Whoever dedicates the time to this role would then provide us with, with the candidates to vote on, I guess that's all. I don't, I don't, I don't even know how they tally up, right? I, we are so far removed in looking at the from CSBA.
Yeah.
That's, that it, it isn't something that's significant. Significant to them, significant of ours, but it's not significant in our community-funded district. That's the point, right? That's why we have the groups that work with the community-funded districts. And, um, so I, so I, I was grateful for the years you did it. Because Peggy's doing it, someone's going through all of it. I just don't know how you would be trying to, who are the?
I guess I just look at.
We can either vote on what Peggy presented, which is the motion on the floor, as Victoria reminded us, or we, and, or Peggy can say that there was one candidate that she was iffy about, and, uh, we then make a trade, and we can amend the amendment, the motion's on the floor. So I don't know how, Peggy, that would be up to you.
I mean, I don't really have somebody I wrote iffy on the application, but. I could switch, I mean, I, I, because I do have her, uh, account you like, which is Carrie Flanders up here. I wrote strong part of your, um, thing. Um, so I could remove Bonnie Castry and replace it with Carrie Flanders.
So moved.
Yeah, that is a friendly amendment to the main motion.
Do me a second.
The same thing, right?
Okay, okay, oh, okay, thank you.
So is there any board discussion?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'm just looking at this from the standpoint of actually running around and meeting the people and talking to them and talking to the other people on the boards, instead of just looking at the page.
But I would think you need to meet all of them, the fidelity.
That's true, and when I did that, I tried to meet all.
Did you get the change on the list?
Yes.
Then.
I did. Bonnie Castry, I agree Flanders.
Yes.
Ready to vote? Uh, Piper?
Yes.
Call us in favor?
Hi.
Oppose, Carrie Spivey. Thank you. Our next item, item 17, approval of South Orange County Special Education Local Plan Area Community Advisory Committee Members for 2018 to 2020. Dr. Devoe, please. So on behalf of Director White and, uh, Self-Director Nelson, we are entitled to four voting members, that's two parents, one special education staff member, and one student. Uh, we are reading the fourth reading, so on the second page of the parent, a staff member and a student. Any public comment on this item?
Yeah, my name's Howard Hills. I wanna apologize to the board and staff and the public who's here because I'm sure everybody's getting sick of me, but I flew here from North Carolina to this meeting. So while I'm here, um, before I have to go back and take care of my granddaughter in Charlotte, I'm gonna get my licks in while I can. Special education. Board Member Dee Perry was a special education teacher in this school district for 35 years. And I'm sure that there, I know that there are people, um, for every teacher in the school system, there are people that had a great experience with that teacher and loved them, and then every teacher gets criticized by some parents. But, um, my daughter, who, um, went to Stanford and then got her master's in special education, is a wonderful human being, but in some respects, she didn't have the fortitude that Dee Perry had. My daughter started teaching special education and got a class of 35, um, uh, serious, classified as serious special education students in the Los Angeles School District, School System. And she had four aides in the room with her. And, um, uh, about three months after she started, she was physically attacked by a student. And, um, and, uh, so special education is a special calling for a teacher. Any teacher that does it for 35 years, um, is an incredible human being. And I would think if that teacher then, after retiring, got elected twice to the school board, that somehow or another, that person might be considered qualified to, in the words of the current president, all a president does is preside over meetings and call the questions. So if, as Chairman, uh, President Vickers said in a couple board meetings ago, that being president really doesn't matter, it doesn't add up to much, it's not very important, and it's not hard. Well, if that's true, then why shouldn't Dee Perry be board president? But in fact, it is, it's, it's not true. Being board president matters, it's important, and has a lot of influence. For example, if you don't want a lot of public input on an item and you're the president, you can move that item to the back of the agenda, and then most people are gonna go home. And I've sat through a meeting after meeting after meeting where I was the last person here. And, um, I wasn't always treated very well when there wasn't anybody else present. But the point is that, um, we have on our board somebody who is, got an incredible record as an educator now. I hasten to add, you don't educate here, you govern. So it's really nice, you get to talk about all the great things that are going on in our education school, and it's fantastic, our school system's fantastic. But the real job here is governance and competence for governance and fairness, and not discriminating against somebody because you don't wanna have them in your club. And, uh, I have four daughters, and I know it's likely you're excluded from a, a club, and I don't think this board should be excluding anybody from its club.
Is there any, is there public comment on the item on the floor, which is the Self-Of-Me Members?
What do I do with this?
Turn it over here. Thank you.
My name is Ken Parker, and I'm, uh, Director Carol Normandin. And I'd like to thank all five of you for your service and everybody sitting up here for your service in the district. I'm here in the hopes that, uh, twice a month, I can get back my wife 30 minutes earlier than I would otherwise. Mr. Hills keeps getting up and commenting on, and making non-german comments that aren't germane to the agenda item at hand. Um, but turning to the repeated, um, and repetitious argument that he's making, 9100 says May. Uh, Mr. Hills went to law school in California, but he's not licensed to practice in California, he's licensed to practice in DC, I think. May is permissive. May means May, and May is not May, sorry. And the board made a decision in December as to who the president and clerk were gonna be. There are three more years of service, uh, between my wife and, and Self-Member Perry. Uh, next December is gonna be here before we know it. And I'd like to point out that repeating the same argument over and over and over does not make the argument stronger. And I thought the statement, uh, uh, about getting your licks in, uh, while you're here, Mr. Hills, was very revealing, and I would like you to stop saying the same thing over and over and over in every public comment opportunity on issues that aren't germane to your upset over, uh, the president and clerk. Um, and I'd like you to stop doing it so that I can get my wife back, um, earlier. She's not paid, none of the members are paid to do this. It's a public service, so I wish you would stop abusing the board and wasting the board's time. Thank you.
Any other public comment? A motion, please.
I'm moved.
Any question, any discussion? Piper, do you have a discussion on this item? Any discussion on that board? Are we trying to get another, the other parent, Alicia? Is that difficult? Didn't you say we can have two parents on this?
You can, yes. Um, so Director White just dropped for these three names, and so we feel confident about these candidates.
Thank you. Piper? Allison Faber?
Hi.
I oppose, Carrie Spivey.
Thank you very much for doing this for us. I had no idea who was the board.
Our next item, item 18, approval to increase the existing agreement with Best, Bestin, Krieger for legal counsel related to special education issues with a not-to-accede amount of $30,000 for the 2018-19 school year. Dr. Devoe?
This is on behalf of Dr. White and, uh, Director White and me. So this is for Best, Bestin, Krieger, we have an existing contract, and we'll just expand our services a bit. Thank you.
Public comment?
Yeah, my name's Howard Hills, and I think this is an exceedingly important item on the agenda tonight. And, um, I guess, um, uh, what I would emphasize here is that I would call on everybody in the room to go to the January 15th video of, uh, and by the way, I'd just like to make one comment. A member of the? A member of the audience is not in a position to say what's Jermaine and not Jermaine, it's the position of the chair. And since I haven't been ruled out of order, I haven't, there's not been a ruling from the chair that my comments are not Jermaine. A member of the audience is not competent to make that judgment here and finding. I'd also like to add, since it's been brought up and the situation's been personalized quite a bit, I was somewhat taken aback by Board Member Normandin's comment that we here in the beach are very distant from the California School Board Association and its activities. Because in fact, if you look at the bylaw revision process, it's been going on for about ten years here, actually more actively, about five, six years. A lot of what we've imported into our local rules is off the shelf from California School Board Association. We are deeply, deeply enmeshed in the political culture of the California School Board Association and the fact that Board Member Norman doesn't know that, I find somewhat odd. But at any rate, I would encourage people to go to, in terms of Jermaine-ness to this item of legal counsel, this board really needs legal counsel.
Do you have a comment on Best, Best and Krieger?
Yes, I'm, yes.
Special Ed.
Yeah, that's right. They are among the council that are being retained. And what I'm saying is this, if members of the public want to find out why you need counsel on special education and counsel on governance and counsel on other subject matter, it's because, a good example of why you need it is the January fifteenth meeting of the board. If you go to hour two, minute eight, second thirty on the video podcast of that January fifteenth meeting, you'll see that the superintendent gets into a debate with a member, an elected member of the board, Board Member Perry. And he says to her, he holds up his hand to silence her when she's trying to ask him a question. And then he says to her, you have no right to come and talk to a member of the staff without, without getting my permission first and going through me as superintendent.
Do you have a comment on this extension with Best, Best and Krieger?
I'm making a comment on the retention of legal services by the district.
That's a, that's a generality, on this specific contract, do you have a comment?
Well, now, it's interesting because I guess I'm being held to a different standard than any member of the public. I've never seen a member of the public here who have been told that they have to be forced to say.
Excuse me, I did at the last meeting several times ask you to, if you had a specific item on the top, be on the floor.
And I, and you allowed me to continue, which you're not doing now.
But you continued at your will.
Okay, well, I've made my comment.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item on Best, Best and Krieger and special ed counsel?
Motion?
Second.
Sorry, my, my little stitches are bleeding, everyone, sorry.
Was that Norman in the middle?
Norman, motion, votes. Any discussion, Piper? Discussion by the board? These are the terms used just for special ed, not for anything. Will I have contact for everything? Continue on that.
Yeah, so we utilize a couple of firms, yes, there's one of three firms. So we utilize Best, Best and Krieger, we utilize Fagan Friedman and Full Frost and Harbaugh Law Group for general, just specifically special education. And O five, O four, O.
Any other discussion, questions? Piper?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie Spivey.
Can we just ask if the heat meter is on, are the air turned off, please?
It's pretty cold over here.
Yeah, it's cold in here.
Your first line was, I'm sorry, I'm going to be working on it.
Item nineteen is approval of our policies, second reading. These policies, we held our special policy meeting February sixteenth, policies came to our February twelfth meeting. And these were the policies that were approved for being tonight as a second reading. And so the recommendation is that we take them as approved, since they were all approved to be forward for a second reading. And now, it'd be, you see the list here? Board policy ninety-one hundred, board policy ninety-one ten, board policy ninety-one, oh, these are bylaws, sorry, bylaws, ninety-one twenty-one, board bylaw ninety-one twenty-two, ninety-one twenty-three, ninety-one twenty-four, nine-two-two-three, nine-two-four-zero, nine-two-five-zero, nine-two-seven-zero, nine-three-two-four, oh-four-six-zero and three-five-five-zero. I'm sorry, can I say it again? Three-five-five-zero?
Three-three-five-zero.
Okay, that's, I see.
You're close.
That'll be.
It's right here.
Well.
Sorry.
Stand corrected.
Is it three-five or what?
Never know, my system.
It's three-three-five-zero, three-five-zero, yeah. Oh, at least on the agenda, it's three-three-five-zero. Yeah, three-three-five-zero.
Do you have a public comment on the board bylaws and coming, or policies coming forward for a second reading?
Uh, my name's Howard Hills and I guess we've gotten to an item here that maybe I would have something Jermaine to say about it. You know, the subject of whether or not the word May creates an ambiguity in Rule nine-one-zero is a new one that we've discussed before. If you look at Southern Statutory Construction, the standard approach would be that if there's a, when you, when you use can, may, shall, you have to then look at the context to determine whether or not it's a mandate or a discretionary direction. And what happens when you encounter an ambiguity, it's statutory language, is as Southern in history has explained, you then go to legislative history to try to determine what the legislature intended when they did that, when they used the word may or shall or can. And in this case, though, you don't have to go to legislative history. Because the next sentence that's in the statute, and this is a statute, it is an ordinance, it has the force of the effect of law, or at least it's described, it's described in Rule nine-three-one-zero and in California State Education Code as a binding rule under section three-five zero-one-zero B of the California Education Code. It's a rule. And so, but in this case, the ruled body of the rule, the text of the rule itself, you don't have to go to legislative history because it says, it is the intent of the board that each member will serve in sequence in a rotation. So to the extent that somebody has a opinion that may creates discretion as opposed to a mandate, and it's a credible argument, but the fact is that it's clarified by the statement of intent that's in the next sentence. And so, what my contention is, is that on December eleventh, when you met, you had a choice. You could repeal nine-one-zero-zero at that time and then proceed under just the state law, which says you will let the president. But since you had imposed on yourself, if nothing else, a protocol, and this board has gone on record, as you did on January fifteenth, when each of you took turns criticizing Board Member Perry along with the superintendent for violating a quote "protocol" by talking to a member of the staff. If nothing else, it's a protocol, which you see the thing as enforceable. But the fact of the matter is, it states very clearly, you didn't, you had the choice to repeal it and then just go under state law or to follow it and then change it for the next year. But you decided to keep the rule and just discriminate against one of your board members. And I think that was a violation of federal and state law, and most of all, it was a violation of your own rules.
On the policy, the board bylaw ninety-one hundred is on the floor with this block, there, I do not find the language that you're referring to because that was not brought forward. So there isn't, there is nothing in this bylaw that you refer to, there's not the word may.
But it's still in effect until you change it.
We have changed it on the first reading, this is our second reading.
Well, then, you just admitted that it hasn't been changed. So your, that rule still applies right now until you pass that second reading tonight.
The policy we have on the floor does not contain that.
I mean, I'm sure that's what you're gonna do, but you know, you're, you're confusing the audience by telling them that that rule's not in effect and it's still in effect until you vote.
Is there someone else that doesn't publicly comment on this item?
Yes.
Okay, which is the group of policies that are forward for a second reading?
Yes.
Okay. The blue card, please?
Yep, I do. This time I do.
Thank you.
Board President, members of the board, Superintendent. Again, my name is Amy Almana, and President of the community Republicans, I'm gonna be very brief. You are about, it would seem, to take a vote that's going to deny due process and handling of the presidency for this board because you don't like someone. They are contrarian, as I said earlier. So you're gonna do that, I'm pretty sure you are. But really, when you do this, you realize that if there's a future board and one of you becomes the contrarian, albeit doubtful, you're gone. You won't be president, you won't be able to set the agenda item. So that's not only the precedent of what you're doing today, it's what's, what's that mean for the future of the way this board runs? And what does it mean when you have the superintendent setting the pol, setting the agenda? I don't think that's what any of you were elected for, I'm sure that's not what any of you would intend. But I'm gonna briefly tell you about unintended consequences. Had a cat, wonderful cat, lived in the east, lots of snow, this kitten scratched the chair. Smart guy, let's cure the cat of doing this, threw the cat out in the snow at night. Every day this would happen. What I was doing is teaching the cat, if you scratch the chair, you're gonna go out in the snow. What the cat learned was, if I want to go out, I scratch the chair. So there are unintended consequences of what you do. In the future, you're gonna find out what those are. I'm asking you don't do it, I know you will. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Motion?
So moved.
Second, and that's the motion for Mr. Tyrell, who has just come in for his second reading. And now do we have discussion?
Yes.
Piper, do you have a special one?
I think that not following our own bylaws has taken away confidence in the community, confidence in board, confidence in the administration. I, I have gotten, I've heard from a lot of people about this that are afraid to come and talk because of retaliation, which I also think is really sad. So I'm very sad that you're doing it this way.
In what way, in which specific?
Where we're, where we're not following our bylaw and we are changing it after.
And are you, which one are you referring to?
I'm talking about ninety-one ten.
Okay, sad, ninety-one, ninety-one ten or ninety-one hundred?
Ninety-one hundred, I'm sorry.
Our members, right, did that move forward to a second reading on the four to one vote? Or four, I'm sorry, four to one, because Carol was on the meeting, so.
I, I do have, I do have comments to you.
Yeah, we're not done yet, I'm just wondering if she wants to vote against the meeting, I can't see this a lot.
You can do it as well, it's, it's one vote, or is she still?
There's a motion on the floor to vote.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And so ninety-one hundred, because we have a board self-evaluation, I would like to include on five, when you said, we set calendar, including board self-evaluation, because in the board self-evaluation? Is it a meeting for that?
Annual?
Yeah, that we'd set the meeting for that. And then I do want to address, and Mark, you can tell me if this is in the place to address, but to address a shift in this policy. And I think instead of waiting to the end of the meeting, that that shift would make more sense to us now. Oh, sorry, I'll turn this to you because I'm really talking to you anyways. So I did apologize to Dee many times, but, yeah, no, I, oh yeah, to my miscommunication, but she never apologized for hers. She said she wanted to be co-president, she didn't want to be president, we're gonna be co-president. The meeting that we have, the annual organizational meeting, is held by law on a certain date. It's after you meet at the C S D A. So you meet at C S D A, if you want to be president, you attend to the president's class. If you want to date, that's how you tell it, or you nominate yourself, or you tell the current president, I want to be president. It's a May, a May, and the law says that you have to be nominated, you didn't nominate yourself, you said I want to be co-president. Co-president would mean the meeting after the organizational meeting, we would get together and we'd discuss changing it. I brought forward vice president, right? Because that's actually in the law, there is a co-president, I can identify it. Vice president, vice president would create kind of like a co-president type atmosphere. But by then, you had already convinced the community that people are sitting here, that there's a conspiracy and people are against you. When you asked for something and I nominated Jen because you asked for it. And you have never apologized for your miscommunication, you just went shouting, there's a conspiracy. So I'm not done yet, you've had the floor for a long time, you've had all these people here to have the floor. So I have waited patiently, waiting for you to apologize from her side of miscommunication and declare failure, which you obviously are not doing. And so, if you want to be the president, you have to understand how the meetings work and what the law says and when we have to hold them. You are unaware of how a robust rule of order works, you're unaware of how the meetings are actually supposed to be held and when we're supposed to hold them. You can't say, I didn't get what I want, and then so kindly, in the kindest voice, say that these student reps shouldn't be here because they weren't voted on by their peers. You weren't voted on by your peers. Now, with me, you asked to be co-president, which we don't have. But no, you didn't nominate yourself, no one else nominated you. And so there's no way to vote for you. And you have caused this ruckus because you wanted to be president and you said, I want to be co-president. And you were never cleared.
I move the agenda.
Can I respond?
Well, you have to have a second.
You have to have a second. In response, I assumed I would be nominated as president because the clerk has always been nominated president. I didn't think I had to talk about it. I asked with you, Carol, about being co-president because I wanted you to have a chance and I thought with your dyslexia, it might be a problem. And so I would do it with you and kind of give up half of my time to do it with you because I really wanted you to have a chance.
I get that, but you ran out yelling, there's conspiracy, there's conspiracy.
Well, I had no idea, I had no idea I wouldn't be nominated.
It's your fifth year as well, how do you not know? It is the little sense.
I move the agenda.
Second.
Vote on, in favor, moving with the agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, that's a motion on the floor. Any further discussion?
For me, Carol. It's for the entire?
Right, my entire group. Piper? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries four zero one. Now we have agenda item twenty, these are the policies that we had a policy workshop needing. We brought forward as a first reading and we brought them back to the first reading due to more discussion and some additions to the policy. So we want to take these individually. Board bylaw ninety-two-three-zero, orientation. That's our first one. Does it probably comment on this? Yes.
My name's Howard Hills, just like to say that, you know, what, when we talk about governance, we do talk, as Mr. Mun said, about due process, but what we're talking about is rule of law. And protocols that are not binding, don't have the effect of law, you know, don't have to be followed, they can as a courtesy, but they don't have to be. But what we have going on here is a situation where somebody, particularly Board Member Normandin, expresses an utter ignorance of the fact that personal conversations between people don't have a standing under law. The fact that people had a personal discussion about different scenarios for possibly changing or improvising, those are personal discussions. What you look to when there's confusion, when there's bad communication, when people are not communicating effectively personally in their interpersonal relationships, guess what you do when you've taken an oath of office to uphold the law? You look to the law and you follow the law. And if you have a bylaw that says it's the intent of the board in passing a bylaw. And if you have a bylaw that says it's the intent of the board in passing a bylaw that every member of the board in sequence will rotate, then the personal discussions that take pace with them, all the little, all the little personality issues that go on between people are irrelevant because you've taken an oath to uphold the law. You didn't take an oath to agree and have effective communication with Board Member Perry. You took an oath to uphold the bylaws that the board passed. And on December eleventh, you didn't do that. And so, at that point, all Board Member Perry has to do is say, let's follow the bylaw or change it. But if we're not gonna change it, then let's follow it. And that means that the board would follow its bylaws. So the board would have a sense of responsibility and duty to nominate the person that under their bylaws, or they would say, you know what, we don't wanna do this anymore. We don't like this bylaw. We just wanna go with state law and, and elect whoever has the most votes, which is fine if you wanna do that. But what you do is then you repeal your bylaw and you didn't do it. And, uh, there's nobody that I've heard that has alleged anything about a conspiracy. That's in somebody's fantasy mind. Because I haven't ever heard the word conspiracy. What I've heard is failure to follow the rule of law. And that's a public, uh, completely transparent thing. It's anything to do with conspiracy. So maybe in somebody's mind, there's a conspiracy, but I don't know who it is because it isn't me.
Any other public comment on this bylaw, ninety-two thirty, orientation? Motion?
I move.
Second.
So we're doing individually these?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make sure.
All in.
Okay.
Piper, do you have any discussion on this?
No.
So, Board Member discussion, this is the one we brought back with, um, it was interested in having potential candidates meet and receiving information about school programs. That's been added in the red. Great.
Did we vote on the last?
No, we pulled the, we brought it back.
First, yes, first reading.
Are we, are we, are we trying to do it all together or free?
It's the reading, no, we're only separating the first and the first readings.
This is first reading.
Right, right. I mean, anyone special on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
You can sit here, I don't mind. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Our next is, uh, Board bylaw thirty-two twenty-two, Agenda Meeting and Materials. A public comment on this item?
Yeah, uh, my name's Howard Hills and I just wanted to say that, uh, I think you all need to, uh, get some advice from counsel, um, on this matter because law says that any member of the public can put something on the agenda. The law says that board really can't refuse to put something on the agenda. It can do some research and delay it a little bit, but in the end, if it's relevant to the board's business as a board of education, that, um, you know, it can be refused if it's not relevant, but if it is, you sort of have to put it on the agenda, uh, or have a good reason not to. And then interestingly, in your bylaw, you actually have a, a more liberal standard than the state law. Because you say, uh, it will go on unless it is not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. And, uh, what that means is that's, that's an easier standard for the member of the public to want something on the agenda to meet because it's hard to come up with too many examples of something that's not within the subject matters jurisdiction. You know, there's a provision, uh, Provision to Education Code that I forget the citation on, I have. But it says that school board can do anything that's not inconsistent with the purpose of public education. That's a damn wide definition of jurisdiction and, and have, um, uh, what's relevant to the board's business. But the funny thing about it is, is you've got this sort of thing that's going on here where, um, if somebody wants to, if a board member wants to put something on the agenda and the superintendent doesn't approve it, or the president doesn't approve it, then they've gotta get, quote, "a consensus" of the board to put it on the agenda, which is just completely ultra-vibes and irrelevant because the fact of the matter is, is that the board doesn't operate by consensus. It operates by majority rule. And, um, but more importantly than that, this is just a discombobulated rule as it stands. More importantly than that, if you restrict the ability of an elected member of the board to put something on the agenda, then that means that I have more authority and power and ability to put something on the agenda than an elected member of the board. So you've just gotta clean this up and get rid of this ridiculous concept that a member of the board has less right to put something on the agenda than a member of the general public. It's really messed up and I don't know if the California School Board Association recommends it, but if it does, it's wrong too.
Any other public comment on this, uh, bylaw? A motion please. Second. Okay, there's discussion and is there? Yeah, I do have, I do have clarification. Piper, do you have any discussion? Do you want to start?
Well, I'd like to get Mark's clarification on this, uh, bylaw and just to make sure we're following the proper etiquettes and about the agenda items.
Yeah, I can, uh, I can. You stay here, you are the public. Uh, Mark is the counsel for the school district. I can provide something in more detail if you want. The speaker's recommendation was to get advice from counsel and I can provide that. It's, uh, this isn't the forum for, um, a major discussion on that. But the, the short answer is, yes, the bylaws is, uh, is valid, is legally valid. One of the legal citations, uh, in, uh, at the end of this bylaw is, is Lee versus Garcia case. That's one of the cases, um, and that's a very instructive case. And it, it's contrary to what you just heard, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Last, why were, were we changing it to two weeks instead of one?
P two thirty-four. Great. So, is this something that we could, we have a policy session again next week. Could we delve into this more at that session so that we can get, um, more information from Mark?
Of course.
Would that agree? Yeah, I'd like to, I can draft my questions because I have, I'm just, I'll submit them adjacent of other board members' due, and then Mark can have them all at the same time as well. That's a great idea.
Okay, so we're pulling this item to bring it back on March eighteen?
Yeah. Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, Carol, I'm sorry, I think Carol. Yes.
Can we table this motion, Mark, to have the proper procedure? If we wanna just bring it for discussion even next week? There seems to be a lot of.
If, if, if you wanna do that, I don't think you, uh, I don't think legally you need to do that. I think you can adopt it as, as, as it's presented.
Oh, as a first read?
As a first read.
As a first read?
Oh, this is a first, yeah, sorry. So you wanna bring it back for another, uh, first reading?
We would like there more discussion and we referenced some information that this was not the, depending to have the discussion.
We could do a first reading, then amend it as part of the.
Right, amend it in the workshop. Can we do that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I bet. Okay, Sam, that seems good. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Piper? Yes. I hope. Our last one on this is a Board bylaw nine four zero zero called Self-Evaluation. Public comment on this bylaw?
Howard Hills, I'm sorry to announce that this could be the last comment I'm making tonight. And, uh, because it's been so fun, but, um, the, uh, I'd just like to say that, um, I've read the court decisions, uh, relevant to these proposed bylaws, including the one that's before you. And, um, I just wanna clarify for the record that the courts do recognize broad discretion on the part of board to control its agenda. And, but the standard is that it's, uh, relevant to, related to the, directly related to the board's, uh, official business. And, um, the, uh, the other standard thing within subject matter jurisdiction has been imported into our rule. But, um, at any rate, um, the import of my comment is that what happens when things get to court is not necessarily the best standard. The standard is what is the, considered the right thing to do under the law? And the question is, do you, as a board, wanna make it harder for board members with something on the agenda or elected than it is for somebody, a general member of the general public? And so I just wanna clarify that.
Did you have a comment on the one on the floor with the self-evaluation?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. Any other public comment on this bylaw on board self-evaluation? Any motion? Second. Piper, do you have discussion on this? Board discussion? Okay. So bring, bring us back some second reading?
Yes.
All those in favor, Piper?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Our next item, item twenty-one, approval and acceptance of the tenure facilities master plan update dynamically documented. It's updated on an annual basis and serves as a planning tool to reflect current progress and alterations from changing conditions and district needs, Mr. Bickson.
Thank you, President Bicker. A significant amount of work is in updating this plan annually. And I wanna thank Mr. Data for his work on it. There's a lot of project rotations that must be considered. We make sure that all the projects, especially the current project provided in the capital improvement program and the facility repair replacement program. There are a lot of exciting things that we've been able to see because of the board's support and our efforts in planning, which I've always emphasized is one of the most important points of construction. If you go into a good plan, you have a good product. And, uh, thanks to Data, we continue to get out on here and nothing has changed since, uh, presented the last, uh, board meeting as an information item. So we have your recommended, uh, word of approval.
I move.
Public comment on this item? Okay, motion now.
So moved.
Second. She's asked for it, Jen, appreciate it.
All right. Piper, do you have any discussion, this is, or discussion?
Well done.
Yeah, it's really good.
And it is, as I said on the presidential, on the information item, it is important that all the work that goes into this and the fact that you adjust it as to district needs since we are self-funded these projects, it's really.
And I don't know what it's called, it's summary sheet that, um, that compares all the districts and it, it lists all of the things that need to be done. It's one of the, it's one of the paragraphs. And we get good in every area except for floor coverage.
That's fair.
Slowly inspecting.
Slowly inspecting, yeah. Working on that.
That's self-diagnosed too, so we, we hold ourselves to our.
They can be that.
But I was really impressed on how well we're doing in all the other areas and it just really stood out.
Yeah.
We get a lot of views.
I'm glad we're on the fours now.
Any other discussions?
I just thought I'd also say thank you for incorporating the community and conversations when we're, it's important. Right, letting them know. It's important. Communication is also important. Piper?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, carry the bylaw. Item twenty-two, approval of updates to hardware that supports the video recording and streaming systems. Mike, please.
Yeah, Mike.
Mike? Mike Morrison? Chief Technology Officer.
Thank you. So this item addresses a couple of the issues we've had with the recording system. The one, uh, item is for a product of audio which controls the cameras and the focus and the zoom in and out. That item is on there, I'm pretty confident that the purchasing, purchasing anyone will fix that because we can replicate, we can basically replicate that problem, there's a power issue. And it's something that is functional now, but it is, it gets a little bit, so I would recommend replacing that. The other item on here is Granicus, which, uh, in the process of looking at Granicus, we've tried to give you the statistics for the system. And so we found out that there is a problem with the stats, which are that they're not accurate. The company, the company says that the stats do not accurately reflect the exact numbers. There is snapshot in time, so basically giving you kind of glimpses at the data, but not the real data. So that was one issue that we had with the Granicus as we were kind of researching this. The Granicus system is, we can't replicate the problems, but we have seen intermittent issues with, with the connectivity on that device. So, but we can't replicate the exact problem that happened that night. So that's the issue with Granicus. So you have, we're kind of putting it forward to you to kind of give a recommendation where to proceed. Do we purchase the audio system? Do we, uh, look at other systems that are out there besides Granicus that could provide maybe better statistics? Or maybe cheaper other systems? Or do we basically, uh, go, go with Granicus and purchase any system? So we're looking, kind of, I'm looking for direction from the board on that issue.
Can we, can we, Howard, have a public comment first?
My name's Howard Hills, I apologize, I didn't intend to make any more comments. But, um, on this item, I think that, um, it's important for, it should be a matter of record and it's important for the public to be aware that there's a lot of history to this. But I think the most relevant is this. At the January twenty-second meeting of the board, the agenda that was issued originally had a notation on it from the superintendent stating that the meeting would not be, um, video recorded. In other words, a decision was made to black out the meeting by the superintendent. And that went out to all the members of the board. And, uh, one member of the board, Dee Perry, um, opposed it. At least, uh, she told me that she, uh, cause I saw that it was notated and asked her about it. She said that she didn't think it was a good idea to black out a meeting. And the explanation was that there could be some controversial, uh, proceedings related to the enforcement of protocols which are unenforceable, um, and in the form that they exist. And so, um, superintendent made a decision that because there was gonna be something controversial in discuss, that they should black it out. And like, that's the opposite. If something's gonna be controversial, you don't black it out because the whole purpose of it is for public disclosure. And, uh, then what happened is the, uh, agenda was, as I understand it, I'm not, this is inside baseball, I don't know what all the detailed mechanics are. But, uh, in the end, the decision was made that it would not be blacked out. But instead, what the board did, it took the item that was controversial off the agenda and postponed action on it. And, um, so the point is that, um, in two thousand fourteen, or, yeah, I guess it was two thousand fourteen, when, uh, Board Member Perry ran for the school board, getting a video system in like the city's was part of her campaign and she got elected. And to the board's credit, and I, I commend the board for making the investment because it was a good investment, um, for people to be able to watch live streaming. Now, um, the, uh, the situation is that the city, uh, system, at least in my experience, has never had a problem. But it's in the context of the fact that the superintendent subsequently showed a proclivity to try to, um, black out a meeting, um, that was gonna be controversial. What that did is that lent credence to the idea that whatever went on on December eleventh, whether it resulted in a blackout of meeting at that time, which happened to be the meeting where Board Member Perry was passed over to the president, it, not in my mind, it's not conspiratorial, but in the minds of a lot of people that have talked to me about it, they felt. It not in my mind, it's not conspiratorial, but in the minds of a lot of people that have talked to me about it, they felt that it was conspiratorial, which was nothing else but perception free to apply the activities on the twenty-second.
Any other public comment on this item? Motion?
I'd move to accept the recommendations.
Whoa, wait, wait, wait. It's to per, yeah, the recommendation to purchase the hardware.
Both, it's both things.
You have questions that would be the answers now.
Yeah, yeah, so before we, so we can divide this into two parts. Cause it's written that one word, it's about purchasing the equipment, and the other one's about analytics. You can get better analytics on YouTube.
Um yeah, the 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 hardware and analytics go together for Granicus.
Yeah.
The audio and then the Granicus are two separate items. The audio.
So it's possible we could switch out a Granicus to another type of product that has.
It is possible.
Okay.
It is possible to switch out the Granicus, it's a good new product. Um that might provide better statistics. Like you said, YouTube Live actually is free and provides some of those real stats.
Right.
Would that be something you're recommending to us?
I I would recommend for you to, I mean, I would say if we want to do that, we should research it and see what it what we're gonna lose. Because there are certain things with Granicus that are nice features as far as clicking on an item and going right to it in the video. And those are features that may or may not be in other systems. So there might be some give, there might be some issues there.
Pros and cons, yeah.
To get real analytics.
So we should approve part of it.
You could.
And then ask you to research. I know it was, I think it was about in May of that year that, you know, took a while to research the systems initially. I think it was about May when we.
We could pull this and have him bring back recommendation.
Unless you need to fix the one part.
I I think we should fix the camera controller just because it's there, I'm certain that we have the problem. And the other one is intermittent and it's been working, so.
So you want to fund the camera controller?
Yeah.
How do you say that, I don't remember anything, thank you.
The audio?
Audio.
Yes.
So then there's a motion to approve audio to do the research on other options.
For other systems.
For other systems, yeah.
Does that have to do with the sound too? Because I get complaints about the sound.
We can, we've we feel that we fixed the sound issues. We did have some initial sound issues, but we have two ways to flat the sound. Your your mics and these mics up here. And we haven't heard, I haven't personally heard issues with sound recently. So I think we've addressed those issues, but if there are continued issues, we'd like to know.
Okay.
Since when the children gave those wonderful reports today without microphones, did we capture all of that with these microphones?
If if they were within the C D S four balls, if there are any, those are the, those are omnidirectional mics, so they'll pick up sound from audience. And as long as they were within the range of those mics, you would pick them up. So we can listen to the archives and see, I just feel concerned that we're gonna lose that.
And and that's one of the reasons that we have it, so grandparents can look if they live somewhere else and can't come and have the pleasure of seeing.
Yeah, and we do get stats from other locations around, and that I'm sure our grandparents around the country.
I don't necessarily have actual stats.
So do we have a motion for that? The one part.
So she has a motion, and I'll say second.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Hi, do you have discussion on that? Any discussion for the board, further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
And Piper?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh Carrie's Bible. And we have our next item, which is board member request for items for future meetings, request for information or general comments. Kelly?
I've been reading the WASP recreditation report uh for the high school. And for anyone who doesn't know, WASP is a accrediting body for what in the United States. In the United States, we have nonprofit groups that we divide the United States up into. WASP accredits Stanford, Berkeley, and all the U Cs, and uh and also accredits high schools. And I've only about a third of the way through the report, I just want to say how uh how wonderful it is. And it's such a wonderful story that we should be really telling everyone about all the good things that we're doing at this school district. And uh we should be spreading that wide. And the other nice thing about the WASP report, once it's put on for everyone to see, is you can, any statement that the school district makes or the high school made about the quality of what we're doing, you click on it and it gives you the data that shows you that it is accurate and true. And so I I I hope that all of you will take the time once it gets out to live stream to to look at it because it is really a very, very impressive document. As someone who's new, it's a hard time of understanding, but these abbreviations are all about. The WASP report does a superb job of laying it out for you. Thank you.
Um I know we all got the information request for the weighted look at Beach High School classes, and I would like to to request that that be on the next agenda.
Uh in what, in what format? Because.
As an information item.
And so we, as far as the next agenda, we defer to staff as far as where that fits in. Because there, I believe that Dr. Almond was addressing that issue with parents and the students at the site.
Right, we will be bringing course approvals for uh the courses that came out of Curriculum Council for approval at the next meeting, which will include all of the courses that um uh on that, we'll identify all the courses that are currently receiving grade weights uh under the U C um that have been applied before or will be applied for, we've got some that will be in the process. So I guess clarity on specifically what the information to be provided would be helpful for me.
I I think it's very important, and Mark, you jump in if we're, because I I have not read that case, and I know that we've referenced it before on the things that we voted on. And this is a subject matter we've voted on, right? But when someone requests something to be on the agenda, that it's just on the agenda, their email everything's attached is on the agenda. It doesn't mean staff is to work on it or do anything, that it's just on the agenda. Am I not reading that part of the Brown Act correctly? I mean, I didn't read what do we do with it? It's just an information item. We don't, we don't. Well, how would it normally be presented when someone, someone could put anything, I mean, I can put, let's look for spotted dogs. Right? I want that on the agenda, and I want us to track spotted dogs. I get done every time the board has a meeting, step up and ask, would that be put on the agenda or submitted to be put on the agenda? As a citizen, I could ask my colleagues, and they think that's crazy for it, but um but you know, but that has to go on by the law. I haven't read the case law that you're talking about, and I could, and that's why. So I'm looking for guidance on on how this works.
Well, again, the 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 case that I'm talking about was a parent that wanted something on the agenda related to a specific event at a specific school. And the board president and the superintendent decided not to put it on the agenda, and the court have helped that in their reasoning for it. So there are some, there are uh um it's not as broad a right as one would think in terms of your first question about if an item is placed on the agenda, is there anything more? I think that that is, you know, direction from the board on what you want, not only placed on the agenda, but the information, whether it's for information or action, uh and the scope of it is for the board to give direction to staff on.
The superintendent, okay. And the other, so if we voted on something, all right, I'd say I just remember something like the board already voted on it, then we don't put it back on the agenda unless something has changed, right? Or there's a majority of the ones on there. Is that not that, is that not the same case? I just remember in a training.
Now, you might be talking about Rob, there's there's Robert's Rules of Order on a motion for reconsideration. Where they have to reconsider an item that has previously been on an agenda and didn't pass. A lot of, some boards have referenced that in their bylaws because Robert's Rules of Order are actually designed for a like Congress where you have a legislative session last week's and not individual meetings. And so the rule on reconsideration applies to those longer term sessions where it can only be brought back by somebody who voted against it the first time. And so the uh that's another area of of board discretion is if you've had an item on the agenda and there's a request to put it back on the agenda, I think it goes back to your bylaws on how items are placed on the agenda and makes those decisions.
And that's part of why we were wanting to talk about the next workshop, so we can read some of the, provide you the questions for you to answer, but then read some of those case laws to understand, get a better understanding of everyone's right to have something on the agenda. And then how we instruct the superintendent, obviously we don't instruct the superintendent, how we instruct the superintendent of what we want as a board is the second part of that conversation. I think the first part was just how we put, you you referenced an item that didn't pass, this item did pass.
So is that, does the same criteria apply? That if if oh, if then if the vote against was not the majority vote, that same criteria applies as that person bringing it back?
That's not in, not in Robert's Rules of Order, but that is again, the uh you know, these these bylaws you're looking at, you know, you Google C S B A and the number, you're gonna find the same bylaw in numerous districts, and they've they've uh been developed over time. And that's why you see um in bylaws where there are some restrictions and designation, usually the board president and the superintendent that decide what votes, um what is placed on the agenda. Or a majority vote of the board to place something on the agenda. So if something passed and then a majority of the board votes to put it back on the agenda again, then under those circumstances, we can go back on the agenda.
And does it come as an item for that vote to be put on the agenda? Does it come as an agenda item for consideration? Because we can't, when we have this item now, was an attempt to be more inclusive of all board members, bringing the item forward. But then it needed to be decided in what manner that comes forward, what staff work is involved to bring that item forward, where it's just in the timeline of say the school year, whether it actually is an information item that would be provided by someone from the school site to a weekly update, whether it's not at the level that would come to a meeting. So we're, that's the things we're trying to sort through this way, rather than having just decided in an outside situation between board president and superintendent. That, and that's what, that's why we're bringing that policy back next week, so that we can sort that out, so it becomes more inclusive rather than the situation of just a few. But I'm not, I'm just not clear on what DePerry is asking for. How, I understand we all got that from the parent, but it's, and now you're requesting it as. She didn't get it? I thought all.
She wasn't on.
Okay, then. You did get it.
The superintendent.
Okay. So she's bringing it forward, but then as an information item, but then what would we do with that is what is what my question is. Because we don't, someone has to present something, and then we'd have to take it from an information item to wherever else it goes.
Which, does someone have to present, I mean.
Well, then if it just appears as a as a one page in our agenda, we don't vote on that, so then it's, what is the effect of that?
That it's something that the public wanted us to all see and be on the agenda?
Well, part of, part of the, what, why is before the students sign up for classes, they want to know if the class is weighted or not.
Well, that happens at the next meeting.
That feels like that's Dr. Almond's job to clarify.
That, I mean, this request was referred to him. Right, but the parent, um parents and students are concerned about it. They make plans.
Right, we can't do that at a board meeting.
No, but we can hear about it. And have all the, have all the transcripts been changed? I mean, where where are we in the process?
That's, that's the administrator at the site. For me, it would be, the the way I interpret it would be an information item to us to show us that the school site at Laguna Beach High School has clearly made sure that all students and families are informed of what is weighted, what is not, what are the course offering descriptions. They were also doing work amounts. That was something they were adding. Um as a parent who has a kid in the high school who's going to look at that, I would hope that would be thorough and exact. But that for me, as a board member, would be an information item, knowing that the high school will get that done, and we.
So then it would be an information.
That's how I would interpret it, yeah.
I I would interpret it that way.
Okay.
But so that information item comes to us at the same time every year in the sense of their.
Or could it be in our report, sorry?
Oh, well, in the report, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think I'm different than information D. I think it could just be in our weekly reports.
Okay, yeah, I was confused.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification. So we bring to the board the the course, courses that that and the board approves all the courses that we will be providing middle school through high school. Those will link, that at that time, it will include
Okay.
the list of all of the courses that we currently offer uh for the next school year. That's what we're bringing to you for approval.
Right.
And it will indicate whether those classes are weighted, U C weighted or or not, and what is currently in progress. So we have, we obviously, we have Curriculum Council has, sorry, has brought forward a recommendation to the board to approve additional courses. However, we can't guarantee they're going to receive U C honors weight until we apply. And the U C grants that, but we will also indicate that in the course catalog discussion. So if the board is comfortable with that as consensus, then that will come, that's coming as an action item at the next meeting.
Okay.
If the board prefers, we can do it as an info item. And then as an action item, it's totally up to the board. We did it as an action item last year.
That would be.
I need to.
That's, that is already planned for the next meeting?
Yes.
That's already planned for the next meeting.
That's why I think I would have to, I wouldn't want to interfere with a high school's doing by putting an extra meeting in front of it. Right, if they need it ahead of time, it's, we have a chance to have a information item. That's fine, but you know, I mean, like I.
It would be.
But I wouldn't want to.
Helpful to have it as an action item so that we can go ahead and move forward.
For time.
I'm not matching, that's what we did last year.
But I'm totally open to the consensus of the board.
And that has all the information of all the waiting of courses, is that, that's what you're going for, right?
Okay.
And all the waiting courses.
Okay.
And and part of that is stuff that Victoria had shared, you can look to see the same time last year was.
Yeah.
That we did this, and then it comes every year at the same time, so it helps us see what's coming in the next year.
Thank you for the clarification.
And then um I'm very saddened by so, how many people in our community are afraid to come to the administration and afraid to come to the board. I know in the last month, I've probably heard from a hundred people at least that are afraid, are afraid of retaliation to their students as these parents were. And um in talking to Dr. Gloria about some of my questions, he suggested I bring them to the board. And that it would be better if we talked about them all together, some some about our First Amendment rights and how that goes along with being a board member and what really is protocol. But you know, we can't say things are protocol that are against our constitutional rights. So here's kind of some questions that I would like us to look at. Thank you. Doctor Gloria. Probably need something good. And then um.
Now, is this something you want, you want to discuss at the workshop or the next meeting or?
Yes. Workshop.
At the workshop.
I think would be more appropriate.
Okay.
And then I just um.
So you actually, you want to bring back board bylaw, there was one ten which we didn't have any. So we had it our last workshop, that was one that we didn't address at all, I mean, we didn't change it.
I make comments.
We had, we we'll find with it as it is. So you want to have it on the discussion for the meeting next week?
I want to have.
I referenced that the first paragraph, so.
Yeah, but it goes along, it goes along with these questions. I'm just referring to that, I'm referring to that bylaw. I'm not saying that we need to bring that back. I'm referring to these questions.
Okay. So and then this section thirty-five zero one zero, be that ed code, correct?
Right.
Didn't reference that.
Well, I I think it, I mean, we're gonna have a workshop, it makes sense to have the bylaws. We don't have to make any changes, but just to have it on there in case we get a girl or something. We deem to make changes, it makes sense, it'd be efficient to have it with us, to have it on the agenda.
Are these questions appropriate to be referred to our council to answer?
Well, when I asked for that, Doctor Gloria, I thought we should discuss.
Well, we would have, we have a consensus.
The board has.
Yeah, we have a consensus for a further question, so we can have a consensus.
But we, in a discussion, we need to have. Right, yeah.
And then, then, um on a, on a positive note, I. On a, on a positive note, I attended a few things, but one of them was living landmarks where students had landmarks around the United States and they each gave a little speech on them and then we asked questions. But it was in a circle, so each child got to give their speech seven times. And it was really fun to see their confidence grow and their eye contact improve. And then I also went to the Student Senate and what I really enjoyed there was how well spoken the students were, their ideas, but also when they disagreed, they were so respectful to each other. And they, they didn't give in, they kept their ideas, but they were very respectful. And it happened to be on the topic of school start time and somebody wanting it early and somebody wanting it late. They did a fabulous job.
What does that help?
The high school. We don't, well, I, I would like us to come up with some way to in, instill in our community for people to not be afraid to talk to administration and board members. I mean, I, it's not a good culture. And I don't know how we'd work on that, but I would like to see us work on that.
Not creating in the first place? Take, when someone says.
Well, it's created.
So if someone complains or says they're fearful, just like the email receipt, which I was bringing that to discuss as part of the actually agenda, I don't know what we move, but, um, when someone says they're fearful or they're concerned, I send them a uniform complaint. Just as I did with a family who said, I'm speaking for other families. I'm like, please have them all fill this out. We will investigate. That is the process. And when we have faith and fidelity in our processes, then that fear goes away.
But they have to give their name then?
No.
They can just, and Dr. Valoria has said before to send them to him that they're afraid to come to you.
So when someone says they're afraid, they can fill out a uniform complaint form. It's anonymous form, they go out there and they can fill it out and they can submit it. That's how you deal with that.
So.
Or they, you know, that's, under the, the policy and the state regulations can, can be filed anonymously. And I've, I've handled several over the years where somebody creates an anonymous Gmail address, for example. And, and either an individual or a group complaint. So there is a, there's no requirement to, um, to identify yourself.
So I guess I'm missing something here. So if a parent wanted to bring up that they are unhappy about not having the grade done, but they are afraid to do it because they think there will be a repercussion for their student, they file a uniform complaint in? Is that what you're saying?
You're saying if someone's unhappy with something?
Or they, or they, they, yes, if they are unhappy with something.
They're not feeling for the board, what the board.
Or if they think.
They don't like a policy.
They don't like a policy. They think their child's being treated unfairly, you know, whatever it is.
But those are two different things. Not liking a policy and your child being treated unfairly, very two different things.
I totally agree.
I, I dislike lots of policies in the world, but having my child mistreated, that's different. So especially in education. So a lot of people are not gonna agree with us on every policy. I think that's given the, the case, but if they feel like they can't come here to speak, they must have some valid reasons why they could file in a complaint. Um, I.
And would that be a uniform complaint or would that be going to the A G?
No, uni- uniform complaints are specific types of complaints.
Yeah.
Q and A's, Williams complaints, discrimination, et cetera, not any, not every garden variety complaint or concern falls within the uniform complaint procedure.
So if, um, going back to my spotted dog, I was unhappy that we weren't tracking every spotted dog. And I wanted to complain and I can't, it's serious, right? So where would I take that complaint if I was uncomfortable going to school? What would it be? The education, the O Cs, it's important, like who, what's above us? If you're unhappy or you're happy with something we voted on, what's a, what's above us to complain to? Or is it to vote us out?
For.
You don't like a policy.
Yeah, for, for a complaint like you're describing, there, there is nobody, um, I mean, I, I, I see it happen quite often where somebody from the community, whether it's a parent or otherwise, will contact the county superintendent of schools, contact the state superintendent of public instruction. But they're usually referred back to, um, the local agency. The uniform complaint procedure, when it applies, if a complainant is dissatisfied with the decision, that can be appealed to the California Department of Education. Um, so that's a specific state mandated complaint procedure that does have an appeal process. There are others like, uh, inter-district transfers that can be appealed to the county board of education. But just garden variety complaints, like you're talking about that don't allege discrimination or, or unlawful fees or something like that. Those are handled locally by the school district, uh, through the complaint procedures that they have. It's a complaint against an employee, that's usually thirteen twelve point one, complaints about instructional materials, support policy thirteen twelve point two, et cetera. So those are the, those are the, uh, procedures for, for doing that. The only one, um, that under the law specifically mandates the authorization to file anonymously is the uniform complaint.
Okay, so then the other remedy would be to vote out, next time not vote for a person you disagree, whoever voted for whatever you disagree with. If that one issue is your issue. Right, like, don't vote for Norman Day if she voted.
That's one remedy.
Okay, so that, and that's really the remedy, isn't it? Is the, okay.
But I, I'm looking more at what we could do so people were not afraid to come, to come to the board, to come to the administration.
But I'm, I'm not sure if you're clear on fear or disagree with a policy. I feel like.
Are they giving you specific examples of retaliation? No. Fear of retaliation.
Are they giving you specific examples?
Uh, what kind of retaliation?
Yes, that would be very specific examples. Okay, then you take it and give the specifics. So you have a hundred people, then you should have a hundred specifics.
They're all in different areas.
I'm saying if you have a hundred people, you have a hundred specifics of how they have experienced retaliation.
And some of them have some emergent, most of them are just fearful.
Well, if they are just fearful, then if, if it was me, I would dissuade them from that by, because I have not seen that exist. And I have not had people come to me with specifics of how they, as the parent, saw that come back with them. When they brought the issue forward, they went to the proper person to deal with that.
Well, I have seen it quite a bit.
You, you have seen your fellow board members retaliated against parents?
Uh, no, I'm not saying that at all. I have seen students, I have seen students retaliated against, not five board members.
But you just said that. You've seen parents getting way of retaliation.
But I, I just.
This is a best question here. We're all in placing items on the agenda. If you're interested in doing a discussion of something that's on the agenda.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Very much.
Okay. Can I, check to Mike, are you down there or do you have one?
Okay.
Do the rest another time.
Well.
No.
We'll give you one too.
I'll, I have some things I'll bring up when we, when we have our, our meeting.
Sure, but, but there's something we can research beforehand and.
This is your opportunity to bring things forward. I mean, this is it.
Okay. This, um, is an article, it's an old article, but I think it's a good one about rethinking the school board's role. And so maybe we can just read it and be discussed, but I won't.
Anyways, and is this like a discussion, is it a board evaluation or is this a discussion?
Yeah, could go along with that.
Or is it workshop? Or, or a policy workshop?
Could go either place. That's a good thing.
Done.
Okay, I'm gonna go down, is that all right?
Yes, it is.
Um, I have just three points. Um, one is that I just wanna remind people that the school board operates as a five-person majority ruled board. We don't have individual power. It's quoted in our bylaw ninety two hundred. We have no individual authority. Each board member on this board has a right to their vote, whether I agree or disagree with them. I respect that each of them has a right to their vote. To insinuate that our votes are mean or bullying, I think is unprofessional and disrespectful of each of us with a differing opinion. In twenty seventeen, we did not break the bylaw when we did not rotate. We did not break a bylaw in twenty eighteen when we did not rotate. I do respect each board member's right to have their own vote and each and every issue. My goal is to treat these people as professional colleagues and be respectful, but I also have a right to my own vote. And the way I vote, I sometimes explain in advance why I make that vote. So I wanna make that clear. I do believe that the board may be obligated to write a letter to clarify, as a board, that we did not break a bylaw uh, when we made decisions on the organizational meeting, which is my opinion. My other issue is I'd like to recommend that we have the Aspen group present, uh, when we are working on our protocol in May. I feel at this point in the board's experience, we could use outside experts to guide us. I reviewed, reviewed these books, um, that were supplied, that were really informative, and I think it would be a positive investment on the board as a whole. And my last comment is that, uh, we have board comments at the end of the meeting. And I feel that it would be really beneficial to also give that opportunity to our student reps. Uh, when they are here, that they have an open time where they might want to comment on something that happened during the meeting. They could pass, they could comment, it's up to them, but they're experiencing this meeting as we are. And I'm sure they get piled up with thoughts and ideas, um, and so I wanted to put that idea out to the board.
Sure. Are you looking for consensus on what the board?
Uh, on the Aspen group, yes, and the student rep, yes. It'd have to be, be by the board.
I think there's already asked to comment on it, so maybe you can get to that.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. Well, I think we should just finish on the Aspen group and then.
I think we do, that's something we have to go with a voting item, right?
Well, is there just to the board for us to bring back a contract? Should I bring something forward to the board for consideration?
Yes.
That's the question.
And I would think exactly what we would expect from today.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and whether it's the Aspen group or there's some, when you're looking at that, there's some other groups. I know we've bought different groups in the past, right? But I think it'd be the best.
So just getting directions.
Information.
So an information on just Aspen group coming, bring or?
Yeah, well, that was the, those were referencing. It should be another group, but he, these were really thoughtful
Right. Yeah. Okay.
processes when I was reading the books, and so I thought they might be well suited for us. And if we have a reference for a really good consultants that could come help, maybe another district has used somebody, they highly recommend.
Okay, I can bring back a couple of different options.
That would be great.
That would be, is that consensus of the board, let's use some head nods, but I'd just like to get some consensus that's interesting for the board.
Yes.
Okay.
And can.
Well, I'll bring back a couple of different options. I'll bring back a contract. I'll simply bring back options for improvement that then you can consider.
Okay.
Can I jump on to that a little bit? And can we add I V B to that list of ways to, they might facilitate it in a different way, but as an option?
Does that person do it in a different way?
No, that, that would be a different.
Another different thing? Okay, well, I, I just came the first one. I want to go back to I V B.
Um, yeah, so I had a comment directed towards, uh, this period, but also to everyone as vice, like experience as a student, as a personal experience. And, um, I understand that you said that you had expected to win the role president of the board. I last year ran for vice presidency for the A S P and so many people told me I was gonna win, so I just kinda like assumed I was. But I ended up losing and I kinda had a tough time with it, but I took it as like a really strong learning experience. I wrote personal statements on it. So, uh, I just think might be something to sit on as you can always try again.
Thank you.
And you know, can we help?
Thank you.
Carol, you want to add more things?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, some other things. Um, the I V B training, I'd like to move that forward, that we would, we would explore what that is.
We already made it for us.
What it means for us.
Sure.
Yeah, how does it apply to the board in the conversations that we're in?
That's interesting.
It could be, it could be interesting to go to interest, like what we're looking for is interest of what we're trying to accomplish and not stuck in past or some future training. You have moved us, we've, uh, in, somewhat in thoughts around that. Right, and I think it'd be nice to experience that, or at least to discuss.
We did observe it. I, I'm, we would need to know how it would apply.
So, uh, if it's okay with the board, what I could potentially do is put it in a weekly update, what, um, Mr. Barber has done for other boards as, as per consideration and then discussion, then we can bring it back as, yeah, again, an item. Having looked at it, staff could, you know, further, that a lot of that's interest.
I support that.
Yes.
We can ask Steve to provide, maybe not this weekly, because I'm, I'm sure he's, uh, busy, he's getting busy here.
Yeah, he's here tomorrow.
We can ask him tomorrow.
And then the next thing, um, is on the calendar, when, you know, we get the calendar, um, information. And when two board members have said no, they can't make a calendar date. I would really like input from staff or input from us of whether that means we just don't have that meeting or we pick, or automatically comes on the agenda to pick another date. I guess, because there are times you can look ahead, I think it's September tenth, there are two members that won't be here. And so do we need the September meeting? We don't need the September meeting. But if it's a tutorial online casino, when they happen, should it just come back onto the agenda item or pick another date? Or should we, if, if it's not an absolutely needed date, we just.
September year.
Oh, wait, no, there's, I mean, we could get, it could be any of the dates, right? And so, um, but how, would we like them to come up with a process and suggest to us, or do we wanna suggest a process to them? Um, when we have members well in advance, knowing that we're gonna miss.
Knowing at least two minimum.
Will be missing well in advance.
Okay, um, can you sound on that?
I think we'll wanna pick another date. That would be the question.
Pick another date?
Figure, just have them throw out dates to us, maybe, does it, it doesn't need to come to a meeting, does it? If it's far in advance.
The dates have to.
We have to.
Oh, that's right. Oh, I'm sorry, my bad. Okay, so.
So, so should it automatically become an action item?
I guess, yeah.
Should it automatically just become an action item?
So you're gonna buy it.
Okay, so we can bring it at the next meeting?
Or we can pull you for potential dates.
Okay.
And bring back some options for the next meeting for action.
Okay. Yes, September tenth meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that was, I think that was the only one on there. And then, um, the recognitions that we do are absolutely amazing. I just would love to pick like a date in May or June where we don't have a business meeting that follows. And we just, especially for all the retirees, kind of, just be able to put our hearts into and a lot of the kids and the employees and everyone be together and just recognize people and not spend, you know, eighteen hours or twenty hours beforehand, reading the agenda and planning for the agenda, but really be able to be in their space, doing nothing but celebrating them. And I am the worst at that, so this is like, I need, well, I don't think of it first, right? So it's the last thing I think about, and I don't wanna think about them last. I watched them tonight and I was like, I don't wanna think about them last, I wanna think about them first. And so I would love to take one of those dates and instead of being a general board meeting, we change that meeting to celebrating. Um, whether it's people retiring, whether it's C I F, whatever we can lump into a big celebration, that all makes sense. It would be fun.
The whole, the whole day party was fabulous that we had in December.
And we had the annual bar.
And maybe we should have something like that at the end of the year.
We have the annual bar.
We have the annual bar. It doesn't include the students and it, it doesn't necessarily mean so much, but.
Doesn't acknowledge people.
And I think, I, sometimes we don't have people come or acknowledging, and it keeps, because it's kind of like, okay, okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. We get it back to work, we get it to work. And I don't want to fail everybody to work. We really want to acknowledge that. Like I sit all night and just listen to them talk about.
But your husband's knowledge.
Well. Well, I know the other did, I, I mean, I know that there are, it's a practice in other districts, because I heard about it. I can see it, see it being enough that someone brought it up. I just, when that came up, I thought it got interesting. Um, but, but I would like to just have, uh, the superintendent, director superintendent, to look into what that would look like to have a celebration.
There are two examples of what, I don't, I don't have clear on, on the, we need to invite everybody together.
Yes. I want the same ideas.
Good. Yeah, I can, I have, yeah.
A joyful way of being.
To celebrate our students.
Yep.
And then, sorry. Um, is this, can I make a clarifying, Mark, I need your, can I make a clarifying comment of something a public member said? Can I clarify something now or not? Okay, thank you. Another thing, after reading, um, you know, when we were reviewing bylaw ninety two thirty, um, at our workshop and then thinking about, you know, we added the having a day, having a day where we, I'm sorry, they're not stable. having a day where we, I'm sorry, they're not stable.
Is there multiple papers?
There's two of them, yeah. Having a day where we, where we can have people come in, you know, and we can meet them and stuff like that, that are potential board members. And because I was a headhunter, just a long way past something about how we recruit people, I thought naturally to recruit people, after basking of the superintendent valuation, we left that, and I was really just kind of basking in all the amazing things the district is doing. And I thought it'd be great for the board to have some kind of communication within, either it's a rep, that the PTA rep within express PTA or we can put in the papers and other places, of something kind of like a did you know? And it could be a did you know, and it could talk about the board's, all the policies and have linked policies. And if someone clicks on those links, it can all know that, so you might be a potential board member, right? You should probably, if they care about all the policies and, and also it could talk about the valuation to whatever the law allows to talk about the valuation, maybe just the goals that were set or something. Leave a place obviously for the superintendent to make their comments when we do evaluations. But something where we talk about the joy and the positive and the governance of what we're doing. Because it, the business meeting of those was boring, but the, I, I don't find research, reading everything and learning all this is boring. And I know that other people aren't going to do, but what they always say to me is like, "Oh my God, how do you do that? Why, why would you do that? Why would you get out of place where people are gonna yell at you? Or why would you get out, right? Why would you volunteer to get out and have them teach you if you're just getting a horrible thing?" And so I just think this is a positive take, it adds to ninety-two thirty. I don't know if there's ever had anything like it, I know we know it's a rap. But I thought it'd be, I don't know how it played out. It'd be very interesting. I just think that I was, I was so basking in what your letter had said, what your letter had said, like in all the wonderful things. And I really thought it'd be nice to have kind of like a did you know. It made me think of students asking us questions, so I think it's a great reading too. Like, "Did you know?", like, right, what our board authority is, "Do you know what our policies are? Do you know?", we just work on these basic policies. "The legislation changed a thousand laws and..." Right, and we did not have to decide this, now I'm all over the consensus tonight, I'll bring it back, I'll bring it back for consensus. And then a comment I will not make because it's actually, I shouldn't do for a number. And that one's very, sorry, I can see Mark briefly. Oh, and that, another thing, Mark, that I would like, I guess I need to be consensus and I will send it in a, in a, a letter to a superintendent if there's direction to do so. And understanding the board's authority. And so we have a board box key, right? Not a key to all the facilities, not a key, right, we have a board box. Like, that's our authority, it's there, is kind of how I think of it, when I check the box. And one about the board box key, like, that we can't duplicate it. There's nothing that talks about the key in anything we have. Whether we duplicate it, give it to our spouse to go check things. I kind of would like us to have some language around the board box key itself. That isn't where I was going though. But we also have email addresses, access of all the students, the teachers, different levels of access that I don't know really falls under our authority. And as long as the board, since now we have an attorney policy, as long as the board has consensus, I'd like to just type up some of these questions around board authority that he would, that should I have to superintendent through that date? If that was around just authority and access and...
Is that, Steve just said yes.
I'm digging yes.
Yes, oh, sorry, yes, sorry, I mean back, so these guys can see, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, sweet, that's all I have.
And I just want to express appreciation for the ribbon cutting at the new building. And a long time coming for that new building. And really, as I said that day, it really completes that facility. And, you know, some of the teams have put up with that for a lot of years of having, not having water every morning breakfast. And so it's definitely more efficient than that, hauling water out there every day. But I just think that at the trophy meet this next weekend, I would really appreciate having that. And I hope that they get back into, you know, begging parents using that precision sand. But it was really nice to see that finishing. And they finished off just behind dinner and the whole thing, just is a real improvement. It was a lot of hard work and sometimes those things get lost. It was a lot, a lot of years ago when that was proposed. Probably get back straight, and I appreciate that in a little ceremony. And we could still call it building pink. But I'll switch my mind, it's still the one hundred. I'm appreciative of the staff members at the two elementary schools that do the work to put together the Read Across America experiences. Students really like it and the teachers like it and really support it. And it's just, I know it goes on across the country, but I'm glad that we have the people that are willing to do the extra work to put those on. I'm appreciative to Dr. Vipo to continuing to provide that for the DLUAC group with their speaker. And I think it was really interesting to read that there's English translation provided. But I noticed that, you know, because usually it's the other way around, but it's, anyway. That's a, a great opportunity for them. And I think the importance of recognizing them, it's a small group in our community, but they still need that information as parents. It's really, we have a policy session next Monday, maybe in the morning. That is, that I'm assuming since we asked for that and that will now be a recorded meeting. I am, I have great concern that we've gotten into this little issue recently where you call it a he said, she said. And so I'm definitely an advocate for recording those meetings because things have been said in those policy meetings that then are misrepresented. And this should clear that up, so that, and again, I would just say, it's, this is really weighing on me because I read a number of things and heard a number of comments that reference our December meeting. And I know that for myself and everyone else, except maybe one person, greatly wishes that we could go back and listen to that meeting. Because we use it, we use it in knowing what was said. And so I know the things that were said at that meeting that have been misrepresented, but because there isn't a recording, then there's nothing to stand on. And so I, again, it was, but I, any, I, I, it is offensive to me that there's any indication that there was any purpose to that or that there would be any purpose to not do a recording of a meeting anytime after that. We have, we have supported that, although it was a three-one-one vote when we moved forward with that, those three and a half years ago. It was not all a board member favorite to do that. In fact, I remember it was a board member, Lansville, who felt that it would create, I think he called it friend standing. And I, I didn't necessarily agree with that because I think people have more respect for the process. But I just, that has been bothering me as I've seen many comments that misrepresent what was said at that meeting. And I'm not answering any of those because I, in a sense, I have no proof. But I know what I've heard and I know what I remember in it. So going forward, it would be nice to have the special meetings, also have the opportunity to go back and listen to the recording when there's any disagreement of what was represented. So that's my, my piece.
Mr. Chris, that's Lauren. When we get to the end, I'd like to say one thing.
Well, this is the end.
Okay. In some light of the question about hearing, we have a little thing, Miss Winston and my bankroll bracelet. And I haven't worn them in a long time, but today I put them on and I did receive a text that they could hear them, the people that are watching can hear my bankrolls. So I believe the students were able to be heard. Just because I don't even have the mic here. So I just wanted to say that the bankrolls were...
I've had comments, not, not in the complaint form, but just comments. Because I think there is a difference between saying something comes as a complaint as a, as just an informational comment about when we wrestle our papers, it interferes with the transmission. So it's up to us to also be careful about.
So I, I won't wear the bankrolls, Matt started then.
I'd like to thank the staff for working all day and staying to this meeting.
Right, we always think, we will stick with that. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, here in the boardroom at six p.m. Have a motion for adjournment. We will have public comment on the last agenda item, it's not an information item or an action item, it's a board presentation item.
I don't have the...
So that a motion for adjournment?
Sorry? Oh, yeah, we're in, all in favor?
I think yes.